Would board members come to the table, please? This March 9, 2017, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Lorton Station Elementary School Strings Ensemble under the direction of Maggie Gilbinski.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under oath, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
out to join us tonight.
I'd also like to say thank you to Principal Joanne Jackson. She's here with us this evening as well from Lorton Station. Thank you. Thank you, students.
The Board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session, which preceded tonight's regular meeting. Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712B, the school board will hold closed-session meetings at undisclosed locations within 15 days for the purpose of interviewing candidates. Announcements. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I will now call on Ms. Chu for announcements.
Thank you. The American Alliance for Theater and Education has designated March as Theater in Our Schools' Month to celebrate and increase public awareness of the benefits of theater education for youth development. The theme is "Fostering a Culture of Creativity." Theater education has the power to raise academic achievement and to simulate innovation and creativity among students. The Alliance encourages citizens to celebrate the positive impact of theater in the classroom and to remember that all students should have access to quality theater education in their lives. In addition, March has been officially designated by the National Association for Music Education for the Observance of Music in Our Schools' Month, the time of year when music education becomes the focus of schools across the nation. This year's theme is "Music Inspires," and it is designed to highlight the importance of comprehensive sequential music education taught by exemplary music educators for all children, and to remind citizens that school is where all children should have access to music. It is also an opportunity for music teachers to bring their music programs to the attention of the school and the community, and to display the benefits school music brings to students of all ages. Finally, March has also been designated as Youth Art Month. Art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students. Art education develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities, teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities, gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs, and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. The theme for Youth Art Month 2017 is "The Power of Art." The Fairfax County School Board believes that support should be given to art teachers as they strengthen art education in schools and communities, and all citizens are urged to take an interest in and give full support to quality school art programs for children and youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Item 2.04, 2017 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll Resolution. I call on Mr. Wilson for the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas the public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future, and whereas employees have dedicated their time, energy, and resources in support of increasing student achievement and college awareness, enhancing the education of students with disabilities through meaningful work experiences, and improving multiple school athletic training programs. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board names Capital One Crop Metcalf and Virginia Tire and Auto to the 2017 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for their ongoing support of Fairfax County public schools. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Moon. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that in the several budget meetings that I've attended and most recently hosted a town hall last evening, it's become clear and apparent that the business economy in Fairfax County is crucial to the well-being of our students in the educational system through their support, through the tax payments they make for their real estate properties. That's a big source of community revenue, and that revenue comes directly to the aid of the public schools. So I'm very honored to be able to bring this resolution to the Board, and I'm grateful for their support.
Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your second?
There are a lot of businesses in Fairfax County who provide many of their employees as mentors and volunteers in many of our schools, and we thank them for it.
Thank you very much. And before we take the vote, I want to mention that these businesses will be recognized at our June 22 School Board Meeting as well, so we will have them in attendance with us. Seeing no other hands or lights, I call for the vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. The motion passes. Item 3.01, Citizen Participation. The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with a decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in the audience at these meetings and watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak to us tonight. We start with Kathy Roos, to be followed by Ellen Talecki, to be followed by Marahan Elhadi. Mrs. Roos? Is Mrs. Roos here tonight? We'll go to Ellen Talecki.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. My name is Ellen Talecki, and I am a resident of Fairfax County. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight, since it appears that some board members are actively seeking to censor and restrict opposing voices and opinions from concerned parents and citizens. I am here tonight to provide a feedback on the newly proposed audit charter, and I hope you do not find speaking about creating a system of increased accountability as somewhat redundant or irrelevant, as some people have recently claimed or implied. First, I oppose the new charter in its current form based on a detailed analysis by a consortium of local professional subject matter experts in this field from Fairfax County. They pointed out that the biggest flaw and deficiencies in the new charter is that the new proposed audit charter removes the investigative authority of the Office of the Auditor General. The problem with the new mission in the new audit charter is that it removes the auditor's authority for fraud, waste, and abuse in accordance with the Virginia Code 15.2-2511.2, the duties of local government auditors. And these duties can be found online at http://slantvaco.org/15.2-2511-2. They also found that the new audit charter does not provide for outside legal counsel to the Office of the Auditor General when division counsel is involved in a potential Another problem with the new audit charter is that it does not include the standards for investigative services, which, incidentally, was raised by school board member Wilson at the February 16 work session, but has now been omitted. In addition to the new audit charter, which allows the audit committee to approve changes to the annual work plan that usurps the school board's approval of the original annual work plan, this is the audit, that is, the audit committee can bypass the approval of the full board. Furthermore, the new audit charter provides no requirements to communicate audit reports to the full school board, so that they remain hidden and out of sight. Lastly, the audit general description has been redefined to narrowly focus solely on financial wrongdoing, whereas the auditor general should be empowered to investigate fraud, waste, abuse, which should include ethical wrongdoing, procurement wrongdoings, and so forth, which there has been much revelation and discussion of late. It is with this disclosure of these problems-
Could you please wrap up in a sentence or two, please?
Okay. It has, okay, it has been with this disclosure of these problems and deficiencies that has been advised that the new charter be rejected in its current form until the auditor general is restored and fully empowered to act on behalf of parents and taxpayers. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Marahan Elhadi, to be followed by Eileen Spots, to be followed by Stamatio Stamos. Ms. Elhadi?
Yes, hi. So she's going to speak three minutes. First, this is Throya Hussain.
Hi. My name is Throya Hussain, and I'm a Fairfax County resident, and I have five children who go to Fairfax County Public Schools. My son goes to Luther Jackson. First of all, I just want to appreciate, I want to talk about the audit charter, and really appreciate that there is the general audit charter that makes the school sufficient and help, you know, like investigate fraud and misuse of things and money and everything. I'm just going to keep it short. I'm here to talk about the, the school board passed the controversial policy 1450 without any impact on the license input and consideration for Muslim-American community, which represent 200,000 residents in the county and roughly 40,000 students in the public schools. Personally, I'm not against homosexuality. The thing is, we are not supporting, we feel like discriminated against when this policy been passed, because it's not being considered as Muslim faith that we don't support our children to learn about homosexuality in early age or be like to know about it. And the other thing is, the transgender, when they use the bathroom, we really don't feel comfortable that my daughter used the bathroom with, you know, somebody who is transgender, and we feel like we're really being discriminated against as a Muslim community for passing this laws, and for our children to be forced to be learning about homosexuality, even though we don't support it in our religion. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Spots?
Oh, wait, I had three minutes.
Yeah. She still has a minute left, I believe, right?
Yes. Hi, my name is Marahan Elhadi. I'm a medical practitioner here in Fairfax County. I'm also the outreach director at the Muslim-American Society, and I commend the Fairfax County Public School System-
I'm sorry. Have you signed up to speak tonight?
Yes. We had six minutes, so we divided it three minutes and three minutes.
I see. So, oh, you are, tell me your name again, please.
So I'm Marahan Elhadi.
I see. All right.
Yes. So I have two minutes left. So I just want to thank you for having an audit charter. I really appreciate, I really appreciate that, and I like it. I think it's a great idea. I think also, in addition to the audit charter, we would like for Fairfax County Board to audit also the Muslim discrimination within the county, including, just like the mother of my community member just said, all of the hate crimes, discrimination, and not just against Muslim children. We want to audit their emotional well-being. How are they feeling? What they're going through? Are they, are they happy with all of the changes as children? I, as a medical practitioner, do not discriminate against anyone. Of course, I hold this oath, and, and I will continue to hold this oath, and I pretty much, what I'm trying to say is, the audit team, the charter that's going to be formed, should pretty much include everyone. We felt secluded, not included, when certain policies were being put in place. So I think now we're well aware of these policies, because we're hearing a lot of stuff from our communities, and the discrimination is ridiculous. We want that to be audited. The Islamophobia is ridiculous. We want that to be audited. The children feeling uncomfortable regarding the 1450 policy, we would love that to be audited. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time. I appreciate what you're doing as board members. My children are proud Fairfax County Public School students, and we really appreciate your hard work and effort. I understand that this is not an easy job for you, and we just, we want to say thank you on behalf of the Muslim-American Society. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Eileen Spots?
My name is Eileen Spots. I'm a community organizer among the Asian-Americans here in Fairfax County. I'm an educator. I'm a small business owner in North Reston, where Pat Hines is our representative. We belong to a fine community of professionals at Aldrin Elementary School. Our PTA has been nationally recognized for parent involvement. So while the FCPS audit has led to a discovery of more than $25 million spent on substitutes, maybe we can think through more appropriate funding. I also asked to serve on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee last year, and I spoke to a number of teachers, parents, and staff concerned about the growing number of children in Herndon and who are not receiving adequate counseling. I think more funding could be appropriated there to have counselors dedicated to the schools in this area, not a floating relationship, but a dedicated one, to make a difference. I also wanted to express concern, as a former corporate training director, that all funding be appropriated to address professional development goals relevant to improving results for children. I was greatly distressed to learn that the teachers of our county had to endure a professional development program called Cultural Proficiency. The professional development program, Cultural Proficiency, covers an appreciation for diversity of cultures from different nationalities, creeds, and gender. This training vendor erroneously describes continuums that break down barriers, and those who do not share these are going to be labeled as rigid and need to be overcome in other ways. Now, the problem with this kind of training is that most of the young teachers in this county have huge hearts, and they don't understand those nuances that are being imparted. They leave little room for conscientious objection of parents who do not want to wish, don't want to raise their children in communities to embrace same-sex marriage, like the person who just spoke, or transgenderism as a new normal. It's just not appreciative of diverse cultures, especially in a rich county like Fairfax County. We're an international capital. It would be more results-oriented if this vendor would, if CPS would stop funding this vendor. And when policy 1450 was forced on us, I had to leave my business and determine a private school selection for my son. I really didn't want to do that. I want to work with you all and help these children that are struggling with gender dysphoria. We need more counselors, and we need more professionalism, and we need leadership that's respectful of the constituency. Right now, we have taxation with no representation of our ideologies. This isn't fair, not to our children, and not to most of us who are taxed at $5,000, $6,000, maybe $10,000 a year for property taxes. Thank you very much for listening, and you have a tremendous challenge to do the right thing, and I hope you do, and repeal 1450.
Stamatio Stam, I'm sorry, Stamos? Stamatio Stamus?
Greetings and salutations. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for having me to, giving me the opportunity to express myself today. I'd just like to start with supporting Fairfax County Public Schools, having a strong independent auditor general, in particular, to investigate the processes and inefficiencies. I'd like to bring up two points in particular. One point in particular regarding the policy 1450, the transgender bathroom policy. The second point, also bringing up the education policy as well. To begin with the policy 1450, as many of the people already mentioned, you can tell there's a lot of not-happy people about the policy, in particular because the policy, and I'm trying to be very respectful here, but everybody has civil liberties, everybody has civil rights, and rightly so, these transgenderous children, they also have their rights, and it has to be observed and appreciated as well. But the policy definitely, although it observes their civil liberties, it definitely infringes on the other civil, the students, the opposing civil liberties of the other students. I mean, can you imagine that a student, excuse me, sorry. So there's reports, actually, I've received reports of students who actually refuse to use the bathroom just because they do not, their level of comfort has been disrupted. Their liberties, their, their freedom has been disrupted because of the policy itself. So are we willing to disrupt the liberty of the majority just because of the liberty of some are infringed? And again, rightly so, these liberties of the transgender students needs to be, needs to be appreciated, but the policy that's in place does not reflect the liberties of everybody in particular, and I'm just asking that it be revised so that all, everybody can be appreciated and their liberties can be exercised. The second point I want to reflect is just regarding the education, regarding how young students, regarding transgender education and sexual education, are exposed to young children at such a young age, and they have no right to opt out. As parents, we definitely have the right to choose what we want our children to be exposed to. If I don't want my child to be exposed to- Uh, if I don't want my child to be exposed to certain types of food, I have the right, and I should be respected, whoever's taking care, taking care of my child, they should be able to respect that, uh, and treat my child as so. Uh, when it comes to education, even in the college level in particular, we do have such educational classes, but we, these classes are optional. And unfortunately, in the high school, elementary school, middle school level, these types of social sciences, they don't have the option to opt out of these classes, uh, and with such a, uh, young frame of mind where they're struggling with their own identity, um, you know, it just becomes very difficult. So, just to wrap up, I know I'm already out of time, but I understand that there was probably a lot of pressure from the previous administration to, with the executive order, so I don't blame anybody here. Uh, however, with the, with the current administration, as you know, probably, they rescind the order, and the Supreme Court as well also pushed back on that, so basically the ball's back on your court.
I'm sorry, you're gonna need to wrap up.
I'm done already, but the ball is back on your court, and I just want to just say that, uh, just remember who, basically who, when you pass a policy, who does it affect? And who are you supposed to represent? Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Cosma, to be followed by John Murray.
My name's Bethany Cosma, and I support an honest, independent, and strong auditor general to investigate fraud, abuse, and mismanagement. There are many things needing investigation and improvement. Two weeks ago, a citizen speaker made the charge that non-residents frequently appear at school board meetings. He was referring to speakers critical of school board action. I am a Fairfax County resident, and to my knowledge, all the speakers who have shared my concerns about the gender identity policies of this board have been Fairfax County residents. The gentleman claimed that resident, Loudoun County residents were testifying here. Perhaps he thought that I was from Loudoun, since I testified before the Loudoun County School Board. I spoke as a Fairfax County resident and a sexual assault victim to warn them that allowing boys and men into women and girls locker rooms, showers, and bathrooms is not only disrespectful, but dangerous. I actually had to withdraw my daughter from her Fairfax County Public School, Elementary School, over concerns for her personal safety and privacy. Her former school is currently allowing a biological boy to use the girls' facilities without any parental notification. Ms. Evans, when you say the transgender guidelines are on hold, that gives a false impression. They're not. The transgender policy is being implemented, and right now, behind parents' backs. This board does not seem interested in listening to constituents who do not share your political views. Mr. McElveen is planning a meeting for Monday to discuss citizen speaker process. One citizen mentioned it, and now there's a meeting. Hundreds of parents have stood in this room, dozens and dozens have spoken about our concerns over adding gender identity to policy 1450, yet no meeting has been called. You haven't even shown us the respect of acknowledging that you've hurt us. All we've heard from you is silence, and now you want to silence us? You have a great ability for silencing people, like the girls who are uncomfortable sharing lockers and shower rooms with boys. They no longer have the right to speak out. As a Fairfax County resident, I ask for respect and for response. This and many other reasons are why I support a strong, honest auditor general. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, John Murray, to be followed by Robert Rigby, to be followed by Andrea Delvecchio.
Good evening. My name's John Murray. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I represent ParentAndChild.org, a group that has reviewed the Fairfax County Family Life Education Curriculum. I have been a resident of Fairfax County for 40 years, and I'm the father of three adult children, all of whom attended and graduated Fairfax County Public Schools, kindergarten through 12th grade. This regulation about the audit, uh, regulation 1450 about the audit guide is the subject of my talk, and actually brings up some very good points. The, uh, all, the regulation reads that all Fairfax County Public Schools, Programs, Departments, and Functions are subject to audit. Agreed. That means family life education is subject to audit. Let's look at some promising areas to start. When you have a class, I have heard stories about this, perhaps, I'm sure you know better, but when you have a class of 30 students, and somewhere close to half of them opt out because of offensive, unhealthy, emotionally harmful, or politically charged lesson materials, you don't need an auditor to tell you that lesson needs work or needs to be eliminated. You don't need an auditor to tell you it's a waste of taxpayer money because the students who opted out are sitting in the library doing busy work. But you haven't recognized by the efforts that ParentAndChild.org and many other parents who have spoken before this group tonight have done to, to alert you to this. Students opting out on lessons being taught to empty classrooms are a waste of money. An auditor who follows the Fairfax County Audit Charter should be able to find the lessons that have the highest opt-out rates and report them to the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, Fairfax County Taxpayers, Fairfax County Parents of Schoolchildren, and of course, you, the Fairfax County School Board. Every student who sits in the library because the materials in FLE lesson are offensive to religious faiths that have endured for millennia, or promote sexual behaviors which even the most secular medical authorities recognize as extremely risky and unhealthy, or at odds with the very educational philosophy that Fairfax County purports to follow, are a waste of taxpayer money. But they're much more than a waste of taxpayer money. There are money being wasted to create lessons that students don't want and parents don't want. Think of the money those lessons could, that are being wasted, could be used for school programs, activities, and teachers' salaries. An auditor would be able to discover these problem lessons and make recommendations to eliminate or change them. An audit policy should include auditing the family life education. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Rigby.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Lockard and staff. My name is Robert Rigby, and I'm an 18-year veteran teacher in FCPS. I want to be clear about how I signed up tonight. I waited until Wednesday evening, when the window for signing up on the agenda was closed, uh, and three of the 10 slots were available for speaking off the agenda, so I arrived early tonight to acquire one of those spots. Under this process, which has been the same since I've worked here, I am permitted to speak off the agenda, uh, so I'm not going to talk about the audit. Uh, I would encourage others in a similar situation to follow that time-tested process and give first dibs to those who are addressing topics which are actually on the agenda. Thus, as president of FCPS Pride, I would like today to address the recent news about transgender students. My organization is group, is a group of LGBT and allied staff, and also parents of LGBT students in the county. First, we heard from the administration, and then we heard from the Supreme Court about delaying or denying accommodations for trans kids. Parents and students who have spoken to me have expressed anger, fear, and grief. The depth of the response surprised me. Teachers have talked to me about confusion. Can trans kids use the restroom, or can they not use the restroom? Should we call them by their chosen names and pronouns? Can they still play on their teams? The statement two weeks ago by the school board chair and the statements by individual squad members are profoundly appreciated, yet we as staff need further guidance. Dr. Lockard, we may not be looking for detailed regulations, but guidelines or clear policies sent by email to employees or in a found-out message to principals may help a lot. I've learned through hearing about experiences that when a kid is denied access to a restroom, that can be devastating. We may think that trans kids are inured to being called by the wrong names or pronouns, but each time it happens, it hurts. Kids may spiral down, not be able to access their studies, and not come to school. I don't need to say what the impact of in-school bullying or cyberbullying can be. Not each of these incidents may lead to a parent being so upset as to contact a school board member of the superintendent's office, but quite frankly, I'm becoming increasingly panicked by what I'm hearing on a day-to-day basis. I don't know what to tell people. Schools are top-down institutions. Faculty and staff need indications of what to do and what, from our perspective, may be troubling times. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Andrea Delvecchio.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. I would also like to speak with you about, um, the family life curriculum. But before I do that, I just want to let you know, my name is Andrea Delvecchio. I am a member, I have been in, uh, a citizen of Fairfax County for 30 years. I actually worked with Fairfax County Public Schools as an occupational therapist many years ago and have gone on to receive, to get a master's in curriculum development, and that's what I'm here to talk about today. The curriculum that I'd like to just discuss, um, is the curriculum about, uh, it's the 10th grade curriculum, Lesson Three on Unplanned Pregnancy. The essential question that is asked in this well-written curriculum is how, the student is asked, "How can I make healthy choices about my reproductive health to ensure a happy and healthy life?" And then the key, the key question for the lesson is, "What options are available for an unplanned pregnancy?" As I said, I think this is a well-written curriculum. It could be developed in, in certain areas, and I, and that's what I would like to propose with you this evening. The students are, are given three clear choices on what to do if they are faced with an unplanned pregnancy. That is parenting the child, adopt, affording the child for adoption after the child is born, or abortion. Now, I would like to just let you all know that currently, there's been a lot of, um, studies done about the effects of abortion, and it has been found that 64% of young women report that they have been coerced or forced into abortion. Dare I say, they've been bullied into abortion. This, this, um, understanding has not really conveyed to these students when they're in this particular lesson about how to face an unplanned pregnancy, and I believe it's an important point that they need to be made aware of. There are, there are, there is a list in here, the teacher fact sheet does go over the, um, the risks, the possible physical risks of an abortion. It also goes over the possible psychological risks of an abortion, but I think this list could be expanded. There are certainly evidences to prove that, uh, young women who have experienced abortion have increased, uh, dependence on, um, drugs and alcohol to, uh, to assuage their guilt, their terrible guilt. And of course, the physical repercussions of abortion, um, can certainly sometimes lead to death and infertility, which we are all, a lot of people are struggling with now in their lives. So, my point tonight is to just suggest to you that, um, these, these detriments of abortion be highlighted a little bit more, and also, on a more positive note, to, for you to know about all the positive pregnancy support centers that are here in Fairfax County for our students, because I'm sure they could make good use of them if they were faced with an unplanned pregnancy. And I have a list, there's eight pregnancy support centers in Fairfax County alone, there's two more down in Manassas and Woodbridge, and I would be happy to share those with the board, just so that you know that there is a better option out there for our young girls than, than abortion. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We next turn to Student Representative Matters, and I call on Ms. Chu.
Thank you. Uh, first, I would just like to welcome, I see a Boy Scout in the audience working on the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. If you would like to stand to be recognized. If you would like to ask a question, we'd ask that later, you are welcome to ask a question. Uh, so first, I'd just like to thank all the speakers. It's always hard to follow all of our citizens speaking, um, but again, um, as I mentioned previously in the last meeting, I will be very excited to be judging the Real Food for Kids Culinary Challenge and Wellness Expo this Saturday, um, in addition to some other schools that will be coming. We're glad to be welcoming West Potomac, Lake Braddock, Glasgow, Chantilly Academy, Marshall Academy, South County High School, and many other schools who'll be having their students prepare very healthy, nutritious, and delicious meals that we could one day offer on our own school nutrition plan, so I'm very excited to be judging this competition. Uh, in addition, in accordance with the Fairfax County Policy 1802, the Superintendent Student Advisory Council will be holding its annual convention to elect the next student representative to the school board on Monday, April 3rd, at Hayfield Secondary School. So, to any students who are watching, I'd urge for you to reach out anytime if you have any questions about the application or the process, um, all of which can be found with details online. And interested students do not have to be a member of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council currently. Um, so just in light of the really busy agenda that we have tonight, I'm going to keep my comments brief, but again, just like to thank all the speakers in the audience today for coming. I was really moved by a lot of the speeches today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we, um, Ms. McGlocklin?
Yes, I had a quick question for our student representative, Ms. Chu.
All right.
Um, Ms. Chu, I was just wondering, uh, if you had sort of just a brief summary or update of the most recent topics of conversation that the SAC has been sharing with you, uh, since it is the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council. I thought it would be helpful for the board, as well as the audience, just to kind of hear the most recent issues you guys have been talking as, as a county.
Um, so just very quickly, our next meeting will be, um, this following Thursday, so it has been a bit of a while before, since our last meeting. But at the last meeting, the main discussion that we had, in addition to some distracted driving discussions, were family life and education programs and student concerns about the curriculum, as well as, in general, a lot of mental wellness and how it relates to policy 1450 and family life education. So, those two topics have been discussed in tandem in the SAC. Um, within the students, we had presentations from those who have been crafting the FLE curriculum, and students provided to those members how they think the curriculum can be changed. Um, would you like some details as to some of the students' views? Um, so, there was definitely some differing and very diverse views from the students on how our curriculum can be changed, some of which believe that, um, with regards to some of the unplanned pregnancy options and expansion of the options that we can list, such as one of our speakers mentioned, some of the centers in this county, or, um, options outside of that, how to deal with an unplanned pregnancy. In addition to that, some students believe that the curriculum could be modified in that students should not be learning as much as they are currently at a younger age. Some students believe that we should expand so they learn more at a younger age. It was really a device of population as to what they would like to see in the curriculum. Um, and I'd say that the biggest takeaway from that discussion was an increased awareness within our curriculum on how students from different gender identifying backgrounds or sexual orientations are at higher risk of certain diseases, um, or they're at higher risk of different mental illnesses, um, in addition to how we can connect mental wellness with family life education better. So, those two topics, I'd say, have been introduced as one cohesive issue that have to be discussed together and combined in the curriculum, and that's kind of where our discussion launched at our last meeting.
All right, so, thank you, Ms. Chu. I appreciate that. Excuse me, Ms. McGlocklin, we do have an agenda to go through tonight?
She's on the agenda, and I have a question about the, the topic, so I'm trying to just understand process-wise, Ms. Chu, so with that discussion at the most recent SAC meeting, will you all be pulling that information together and bringing it to the board? Because I know you represent all 25 high schools. I didn't know if it was just a conversation that took place and that was just an informative dialogue, or is that actually then compiled so that we hear from the 25 high schools what percentage, you know, feel one way or another way about, uh, things related to curriculum? I mean, these are, we serve students, and so I, I think it's helpful for the board that we definitely understand the input you're getting, and then it allows you to be that, that vehicle for the board to hear it.
So, thank you for the question. A lot of the info that, um, the students have been discussing and a lot of the suggestions that they have will be in the end-of-the-year presentation that they deliver here at the board. In addition to that, a lot of the students, we've been able to, at every single meeting, offer their suggestions to whoever our presenters are. So, whether it be from the Josh Anderson Foundation, we provide suggestions for them on how they can be working with our schools, or to the director of our FLE curriculums and who's actually constructing it, or to the Fairfax County Police Department, we've offered suggestions to them as well. So, a lot of the suggestions have been So a lot of the suggestions have been crafted into who's been coming directly to our meetings. But if it would be helpful, before that presentation, for these suggestions to be consolidated for the board, I'd be happy to work on that at this next meeting.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Chu.
We go to Agenda Item 4.02, Regulation 1420 Audit Charter. I call on Ms. Hines for the motion.
Thank you. I move that the school board, and Madam Chair, I have to let you know, I've just realized that there is a language change that needs to be made to this tonight before we vote on it. So thank you, Mr. Moon, for pointing that out. I will go ahead and read it and then propose an amendment.
All right.
That's all right. I move that the school board revoke the current version of Regulation 1420 Internal Audit Charter and approve the rewrite as a revision of Policy 1105 Auditor General Authority.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, could I now make the proposed amendment?
Certainly.
All right, thank you. On, if you look at the attachment, which is the policy itself, Page 3, under Audit Work Plan, it says, "The auditor generals shall submit annually to the audit committee a work plan for the coming fiscal year, which is to be presented for approval by the school board, period. The plan serves as a guide, and proposed changes to the plan shall be approved by the audit committee." I'm sure that at our work session, we actually agreed to change that to "school board." So what I'd like to propose is that we amend, just replace the last two words, "audit committee," with "school board."
Second? I'm sorry, could you tell us where in this you are?
Sure. I'm on Page 3, it is F.
Page 3, F, all right. Madam Clerk, could you please put this up for us to see? So it's under Page 3, F. And so your amendment would change, shall be approved by the audit committee to read...
Shall be approved by the school board.
So audit committee would be replaced by school board?
Yes.
In a second? Okay. So you've made that motion, and Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk, if you would put that up on the board if you can? You can, okay. I think the amendment is fairly simple. Is there a second for that motion? Seconded by Mrs. Huff. Want to speak to your amendment?
Sure, just quickly. Yeah, I want to apologize. I should have noticed this before it came to the board. But I did not, and I appreciate somebody noticing it. That was the clear intention of the board, as my recollection. So I think with that change, the policy is ready to go.
Mrs. Huff, do you want to speak to your second of the amendment?
Yeah, I'll just, we absolutely discussed this at the work session, so this is an appropriate amendment. I'll speak fully once the motion's back on the table.
All right, seeing no other hands on this, how many? Oh, Mr. Wilson, and, Mr. Wilson, are you speaking to the amendment?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right.
I was a little worried my light wasn't working over there. This is a minor change, and I think it's just really offered for clarifying. I think I would propose a slight modification so that it would read, "And proposed changes to the plan shall be submitted by the audit committee to the board for approval." Because I think, as a matter of process, the audit committee would entertain proposed changes and then make a decision as to whether to bring it to the board.
So you're making a substitute motion, a substitute amendment?
Yeah, or just a friendly amendment to her, to, Chairman? Amendment to the amendment.
Ms. Hines, did you want to accept that change? Or did you want us to vote on this as a substitute?
Well, I really hate drafting at the table. Because I'm trying to think, what, how could this not work? You know, if we put "approved by the school board", we know that our practice is for everything to go to the school board as a proposal from the audit committee. I don't know if there's a situation where the school board might be presented with an audit plan amendment that did not go through the audit committee. But if there were a time when the school board wanted to do that, I think we should leave that as a possibility. So I hear what you're trying to do, you're trying to clarify. But I don't know that it's necessary.
All right, so Mr. Wilson does have a proposed substitute motion. Is there a second for that substitute?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Schultz. All right, Mr. Wilson, if you, do you have, did you want to speak to that more fully?
Yeah, I want to make sure everybody, first of all, understood the modification that I proposed. So I don't know if that can, maybe I should read it again. The final line of Paragraph F, starting with the word "and proposed", so it would read, "And proposed changes to the plan shall be submitted by the audit committee to the board for approval." One of the things about the proposed policy is it does take care to establish the reporting, the lines of reporting, pretty carefully by the auditor to the audit committee, and then to the board. So that's, so this is really just to make it consistent. I agree with Ms. Hines, there certainly will be circumstances that we might need to have the auditor bring things directly to the board, directly to bring changes to the plan to the board. So I actually think that's a relevant consideration. And, you know, perhaps if that was the intent, we should, you know, maybe I should withdraw my modification. My intent was really to just sort of clarify process.
Mrs. Schultz, do you want to speak to your second?
No, thank you.
I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Mr. Wilson, thank you. I understand why you introduced your amendment because of numerous hours of discussion about how the process would work. You know, for those in the audience who don't know, the role of the auditor general and the development of an audit plan is a relatively new process for the school board. And so we have been trying to be very deliberate in ensuring that whatever we do increases transparency and allows for good, sound work to take place. I am not going to support the amendment because of the concerns that Ms. Hines raised. And I will give you an example. Last year, when we were working on the work plan, there were some modifications, minor modifications to the work plan that took place at the board table. And we went ahead and made those changes at the board table. And so I want to preserve the option for the board to make changes without having to refer something back to the audit committee to adopt those minor changes at the audit committee and then bring it back. I am, and I think I share this with you, Mr. Wilson, I sometimes get frustrated at the amount of time it takes for us to move things forward. So I would like to allow this to be a more streamlined process when necessary.
All right, with that, I'll take a vote on Mr. Wilson's motion, which, if I have this correct, do we have this up now?
So Madam Chair, I will draw my motion. There doesn't seem to be support on the board for my motion, so I'll draw it.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson's withdrawn his motion. So we are back to the original amendment from Ms. Hines, as seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders to... That's what we're doing. I'm sorry, Mrs. Huff, seconded it. Which would replace the audit committee with the school board. All those in favor of that amendment, raise your hand. And that is unanimous, that amendment passes. So we're now back to the main motion.
Could I speak to the main motion? Is that all right?
Yes, you certainly may. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few things. I just wanted to appreciate the work of the audit committee and school board members, who've spent a lot of time on this foundational document. It's gone through a lot of changes. And the folks in the audit office as well have worked very hard, and Division Counsel. We've had very good support. I would just point out that this audit charter, one of the speakers tonight seemed concerned that it removes the authority under the audit, the auditor general, removes the auditor general's authority for investigations of fraud, waste, and abuse, and that is simply not true. I don't know where that information came from.
Mrs. Huff?
Did you want to speak to the second?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the lights.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to...
Okay, Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Sure, thank you. I share the thanks and commendations. I'd like to thank Chairman Hines and the rest of the audit committee, as well as the two citizen members and staff for all of the excellent hard work that has gone into the development of this charter. It has been a long process of getting a charter in place that seems to allow for a more, a growth of the audit function within the school board. But the audit charter represents the commitment of this school board to being more transparent, to be willing to undertake audits that are contained in the work plan, and to develop a work plan that includes recommendations by members of the staff and the school system as a whole, as well as taking in input from each of the school board members. And certainly, if community members have concerns, they should express them and make recommendations that will then be brought together into an audit universe, which will have a lot of discussion, I'm sure, and a new work plan developed next year, or every year. And I did want to address the citizen members', or citizens' concern about the ability of the auditor to investigate fraud, waste, and abuse. That was not the intent by not including it in the audit charter. The concept was that the audit charter is a framework document, and you don't have to get down into the very specifics of existing regulations or new regulations that will be addressed by the auditor and ongoing. And so we are committed to transparency. We are committed to the auditor general function. And I think this is an excellent step in that direction.
Mrs. Huff?
Thank you. I guess I have some similar comments and possibly some questions, given some of the comments made tonight. And I do also want to say, to reiterate what Ms. Corbett Sanders said, is we specifically pared down this charter to say what we as a board are anticipating is under the authority of the auditor general. And actually, even was glad under Section B, where we say, "The Office of Auditor General shall have unrestricted access to all school division activities." And we, as an audit committee, parts of that were taken out, and we did put that back in. And I think that was a good move and important to maintain the independence of the auditor general. But I would ask the citizens to stay focused in, because we are going to have regulations coming forward. And as a matter of fact, we're going to be discussing the fraud, waste, and abuse regulations specifically at our next audit committee meeting, where I do think some of those comments are going to come into play, and we all need to discuss. But there was something else that was mentioned that I don't remember us discussing in the audit committee meeting, and I think was a valid point brought up by the citizen in terms of the audit reports. I don't know that it's appropriate for it to go into the audit charter itself, but I do think, as a board, we need to keep it in mind and figure out how we want to make sure that reports do come to the full board. And the reason I say that is because I remember just two weeks ago, when the asset management audit came to the full board, it wasn't actually indicated that we would come to a full work session. But then we, as a board, did decide that. And I feel like it happened that way, but it doesn't always. And do we, as a board, want to consider what it would look like to say? What is our framework for making sure important audits are coming to the full board? And I know that many will probably say, "That's typically what we do." And I know that. But I don't know that there's any process for that, a defined process for that. So I did want to just point that out, and for something for my colleagues to consider. But otherwise, I am pleased with this and look forward to the support for it.
Mrs. Schultz?
So I'm really glad to hear the echoes of, from the community seeking transparency and accountability on the part of the board. We aren't our board, we're your board. I wish that I'd heard this same kind of discussion an hour and 15 minutes ago, when we were in a room across the hall that's a part of our open meetings. They're called our forum topics. And it's how new board, new topics that the board members want to introduce to get onto the work plan occur. And the public may not be aware of that. But I had a forum topic that asked that our FOIAs, the Freedom of Information Act requests that occur from the public, that the public pays for, that becomes public information, be placed on our website. That's a reasonable, I think that's a very reasonable thing to say, that if a member of the public follows public law, and we respond, and you've paid for it as a member of the public, it becomes public information, that we should make that available. That makes it easier for other members of the public who may have queries about the same information. And it got bogged down in the most bizarre conversation, frankly, that I can't explain. And we were goat-rope around into me having to bring it back to forum again at some point in the future when we get more information from staff. That's precisely the type of reason why we need a good auditor, a good audit plan, is to look at the work of the board, and do we now create more work for staff in the very thing that we're trying to lessen the work of staff? If staff has to respond to the same Freedom of Information request over and over and over again to tell people that they already have it, and then they get the information for free, wouldn't that be easier if that was just on our website and you could just look it up yourself? So we do need a strong audit plan. We are in the middle of hiring not only a superintendent, but in hiring a new auditor general. And at some point, all of this is going to come together. And I greatly appreciate the members of the public coming and continuing to present themselves. It's difficult, it's hard. We're a diverse community of diverse faiths, diverse languages. But those three minutes in front of us are important for us to hear you saying, "Please, please be accountable to we, the voters, we, the taxpayers." This is a positive step forward. The audit structure is coming together. Once we have an auditor general, I think that the members of the public are going to be better served. And the work to get to this point has been tremendous on behalf of the board, but we're not finished yet. And I look forward to the public continuing to seek accountability of us as stewards of your money and your resources.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to make it very clear to my colleagues on the audit committee that I greatly appreciate the pain and suffering you endured in terms of getting this document to the dais tonight for us to discuss. Having spent 14 months on the Governance Committee meeting, the Governance Committee, I can tell you that I feel your pain. And it is sometimes very difficult in a small room with even a few of us analyzing issues to get to a conclusion that is, we believe, on the committee, is appropriate to submit to the board. And in the case of the Governance Committee, on one significant occasion, the board turned it right back around and said, "This is not what we want. And please go back to committee and work on it some more." So I actually was amazed that, when the document became public and posted for this meeting, members of our community spent the time to think about and really deeply analyze the work that came out of committee. And the issues that they've raised, frankly, are not trivial. And rather than make amendments at the table to address and clarify the issues that were raised, I would like to make a moment, a motion, Madam Chair, to table this motion until after a future work session. Maybe we could take it up at a board meeting in May, so that we have time to go back and look in depth at the issues that were raised, and have a discussion and an opportunity to dig into what was raised, both at the dais and before the meeting, to me directly. So that's my motion.
So you're moving to defer...
To table to a date certain, I guess it would be maybe postponed to two meetings hence, or something, to give us a chance to discuss it.
Is there a second? Seeing no second?
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Mrs. Huff. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak more to your...
Yeah, so just briefly, the points that were raised...
Madam Chair, point of order, could they have an exact language of the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Wilson, you're, we'll, we'll need to put up your, your motion. Madam Clerk, we'll need to, we'll need, we need to be able to see it in front of us.
I didn't want to have a date.
Okay, so maybe we could, maybe the clerk could pull up the calendar and we could, I would be happy to identify a, a date certain. Okay.
April 6th or April 20th would be our next to, our April board?
Madam Chair, the motion would be to, to propose postpone our decision on this until the April 27th.
So postpone action, is that?
Postpone action until the April 27th board meeting.
April 27th. All right, and Mrs. Huff, you're still seconding that motion. All right, Mr. Wilson?
So several points were raised and, and I think some of them were, were answered in part at the table by my colleagues on the, the audit committee. The, the first question about independent authority to conduct investigations, it sounds like that wasn't the intent of this and, but I did notice in my review that, that what we are looking at appears to be sort of a significant revision of the former regulation that was in place, which we are now revoking and we're putting the revised regulation in place of a policy, 1105 is the new policy. So I can, I, I think that perhaps that may be the source of some of the confusion in terms of that. I think it would be helpful to call that out with, with more clarity so that it's, it's abundantly clear to the public. I agree with Ms. Schultz, we have, we have an issue of promoting transparency to the public and recognizing when concerns are raised. So that, that I believe probably could be addressed in the mission section. And the second point that was raised was about fraud, waste and abuse. And, and I, I, when I heard that complaint, I looked at the policy that's proposed, I, I couldn't help but noticing that they're correct. And so then I, I flipped to the back of the proposed policy and it references Regulation 1410, which is the procedures for reporting, investigating, embezzlement, fraud, waste and abuse. But it, there, in nowhere in the policy does this, this proposed policy does it reference 1107, Policy 1107, which in fact, I believe is the policy that is titled for, or captures the concept of fraud, waste and abuse. So again, I think that's probably something we can, you know, through modifications to this proposed policy, we can do that at the table. However, I think we'd be best served to do it in a more atmosphere less, you know, less pressured for time. So I would, I would like to, to do that, but I do think that that, calling that out and making that clear in the auditor general's policy is certainly worth our discussion. And the third point that they raised that I found, I was, I actually, I guess I overread when I had looked at this earlier, was the point about what happens, when can the auditor general, when do they consult with division counsel? And the, the point that was raised at the dais was, well, what if the division counsel is subject to the investigation, then what? And, and that's a great question because in that circumstance, it may be that there has to be some capacity for the auditor general to receive legal advice in, through some other source. So I don't, I may, perhaps the committee already had dealt with that issue, but I, I don't recall discussing that at our work session. And finally, the last point that I appreciated them raising was the, the issue I raised at the work session having to do with referencing the accepted, generally accepted auditing standards. In, in the world that I work in for my law practice, the, the term generally accepted accounting principles is commonly used and, and it is a sort of a term of art and we always qualify it in the documents that I work on to say, as applied in the real estate industry. And I think here I would like, I, we talked about it briefly and I know that I asked staff for input on that, but, but I think that is a fair criticism to say that the, what, what that means is difficult to divine from the one sentence. And so perhaps other additional sentences could be added to clarify where, where one would go to find those generally accepted auditing standards. So those are just a few. I do appreciate the fact that, the, the fifth point on my list was the amendments, the changes to the audit plan, and I appreciate that we, that we've made a change on that. My strong preference would be that the board support having this discussion in the context of a further work session and then bring this back to the table after we have addressed the points that have been raised, but we can do it by serial amendment that I'll need to make as we go forward.
Mrs. Huff?
So funny enough, I just seconded as a courteous to Mr. Wilson and now I find myself somewhat convinced. So I guess that's why it's always good to allow our colleagues to speak. Given the discussions we've had in the audit committee, I think I'm probably coming at it different from Mr. Wilson and I feel like we discussed all of these concerns in audit committee. However, one place I'm feeling held up on is Regulation 1410 is still out there. It has a lot of red line in it. And if we are not clear enough in here and then Regulation 1410 passes with a lot of restriction that we specifically said we didn't want in the audit charter, are we going to end up tying our hands? And would it be wiser and better governance to really be doing these, both of these documents together and passing them together to make sure that we are asking for what we want and we're getting what we want and that we are able to govern over the auditor general office well? So like I said, I, I was really only giving my second as, to be courteous, but I actually think it might be in our best interest to bring this back with Regulation 1410 and I don't really see a harm in that. Thank you.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. There has been, this audit charter has been discussed and re-discussed and gone back and forth since probably six weeks after I got on the board last year when I was on the, and I was assigned the audit committee. And the question has come about as to why we need an audit charter. We don't have a superintendent's charter, but we do have an audit charter, which is to provide the framework from which the new auditor general will, and the office of the auditor general will conduct its business. This is really a broad policy framework to indicate, to indicate to the public as well as to indicate to the new auditor general, who will soon come on board, as to what they can expect as their roles and responsibility and the general way we will do business. But because this is a new, relatively new function within the school board, and frankly, it's a relatively new function within the parlance of school systems across the country. Most school systems use an independent auditor to audit their accounts. We are going beyond the role of an independent auditor to audit accounts to one in which we are bringing someone on board and staffing that function to help us focus on continued process improvement, help us do the investigations into situations which warrant investigations and more importantly, to have a disciplined approach to how we are going to do audits going forward. Not only financial audits, but audits as far as performance audits and enterprise risk assessments. So this is really a overarching, a capstone in which we are going to continue to build on. Next week, we will be talking about the, the fraud, waste and abuse regulation. And we have other regulations and other policies that will, I am sure, evolve over time. And so from my perspective, I think that we should go ahead and get this adopted. It sends a powerful message to the community. It also sends a powerful message to those that we are hoping to attract to the system as a potential auditor general. And so I'm just a little concerned that we keep kicking the can down the road, whereas let's go ahead and move forward.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I sort of look at this one as, it's a win-win whichever, whichever way we go at it because on the one hand, as, as Mr. Wilson is proposing, you don't necessarily create one in a vacuum and then, you know, go to the next one because they really are intertwined. On the other hand, as Ms. Corbett Sanders pointed out, there has been a lot of review and analysis on this to date. And while the board then can, and the audit committee tackles Regulation 1410, there's certainly nothing that prevents the audit committee from recommending in light of any changes to 1410, we would also now like to propose changes to the audit charter. So as someone who serves on and leads the governance committee with Mr. Wilson, I do know what it's like to have things that languish in committees. Ms. Schultz has often described letting perfection be the enemy of good. So I, I really appreciate Mr. Wilson's proposal. I do think that because we have the flexibility and the ability to revise as needed, I would be more comfortable that we vote on this tonight if we believe it's, it best represents our efforts so far. I would strongly hope that Mr. Wilson will provide the audit committee with input about the 14, the draft 1410 regulation so that they benefit from his insights, which I often find highly persuasive and, and informative. And then we can, you know, again, revisit the audit charters needed. And just for the public who's listening, this board is working extremely hard, not just to find a great superintendent to lead this division, but also to find an outstanding auditor general to help this board in its deep commitment to ensuring that we have the most effective and efficient oversight of the operations of what is still rightfully so regarded as one of the best public school systems in the United States that can never be lost. Can we continuously improve? Absolutely. And to the speakers who came tonight and who've been coming every two weeks, your voices matter. No matter how many of you share a point of view, whether it's a few, whether it's many, whether it's a vast majority, all voices matter in Fairfax County. And if more people were willing to come forward, we might even have a greater breadth of understanding of where people are. So yes, if you're sitting at home, email away, let us know what's weighing on your minds. But for tonight, I'm really proud and I want to echo the appreciation that Mr. Wilson said to the audit committee members. This is tireless work, having to carefully examine the audit charter. I, I think we're in a good position right now to approve it tonight and then again, revisit as needed.
Mrs. Schultz?
So it's funny, Ms. Huff brought up that she only seconded to give courtesy to our fellow board member. And I, I do think that that's a good practice. And the reason I think it's a good practice is, is that I wasn't going to vote for Mr. Wilson's amendment. And the more I think about it, we haven't hired an auditor general yet. There is nothing pressing about an audit charter before we have an auditor general in, in play. And to intentionally pass something that we now know has a dissonance with another policy, I think is bad governance. And it would be frankly, a perfunctory vote come the second meeting of April and it wouldn't take any time on our calendar, so it doesn't take any time. And in the meantime, you can straighten out 1410 and have clarity in passing the audit charter. So we've done the heavy work, but then why pass an, something that we know already has something wrong with it? Go fix it and then you're passing an audit charter that is aligned to the policies that support it from the outset. So I think it sort of keeps the house in order and doesn't take our time and it demonstrates on our part, good, good leadership and good governance. We wouldn't want a curriculum or textbook to be published with something that we know is an error and say, well, we'll just fix it with, you know, with our subsequent work. It's not something that we would expect from our administrators in our buildings or our teachers in our classrooms. So I think we model good governance and good leadership by just saying that we'll just place this on the agenda and have a perfunctory vote later.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. I, I agree with Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Corbett Sanders. This policy I think is quite appropriate. It is the broad, broad defining charter for the audit work. And certainly the audit committee will take on other investigations. They have another regulation and there are also other policies that they may be looking at in addition to the actual audit reports. So I am quite prepared to vote this through tonight. A great deal of thought and work, many months actually, have gone into the preparation of this audit charter and I believe that it is, it is quite appropriate and I think ripe to move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. I also think that we should go ahead and adopt this policy tonight. We, you know, we can't let speed be the enemy of the good either, but I don't think after months and months and months of looking at this, that we're at any danger of that. What I hear, I, I don't hear concerns that there's anything wrong with the policy. I hear concerns that there may be minor changes that a board member would like to make right now. And, you know, I would welcome Mr. Wilson to try to do that at the table here. My own feeling, some of the concerns that Mr. Wilson has brought up, I think have to do with, you know, we are going from a regulation to a policy here, which definitely means that we streamlined quite a bit and took out quite a bit. And that the, the concerns that I hear really have to do with Regulation 1410, which as others have mentioned, we will be looking at very soon. And the entire board will be able to dive right into that. There's nothing that staff can write in Regulation 1410 that we will not see. The audit committee will look at it, the school board will look at it. So if there's anything in 1410 that we think is missing that has to do with investigations and fraud, waste and abuse, we'll make sure that it's in there. The questions about, you know, whether the auditor general can consult with division counsel or outside counsel, what, what happens when leadership team members and superintendent or whoever might be under investigation, what happens then? That will be in Regulation 1410. So we will dive into all of that as a board and I think it's appropriate that that all be in regulation rather than in policy. So I, because the audit committee has done these cartwheels now for months, I do think that this as a policy is where it needs to be and not that the question should not be answered, but that they should be answered in our conversation about Regulation 1410. So I would like us to go ahead and put the policy to bed and then move on to the next step.
All right. With that, I would ask that anyone who does not want to go back to turn their light off, I see a few, all right, thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
I apologize, but I feel as if we're, we've got a little bit of who's on first, what's on second, and I don't know who's on third because we've, we've got Policy 1105. We've got Regulation 1410. We have Regulation 1420. So when I read the language of what the motion is, I will have to say it's not as clear as I thought it was initially. So we're going to revoke 1420. Well, sorry, we're going to revoke Regulation 1420, which was our audit charter, and then approve the rewrite as a revision of Policy 1105.
Which is the Audit General.
So we have the Audit General Authority. So 1105, is this motion basically trying to say that we revised Policy 1105, Audit General Authority? And now the one that was tied to that was a Regulation 1420? But we now no longer call it a regulation, we're just going to call it the Audit Charter? And the word "regulation" is removed from it?
To whom are you addressing that question, Ms. McLaughlin?
Well, I guess it would be to Ms. Heinz, who's the Audit Chair, or it would be to staff who helped craft these titles for the work that's in front of us. Because I sort of feel like we've, I've listened to my board colleagues now reference Regulation 1410, Regulation 1420, Audit Charter, and then this is saying Policy 1105.
So Ms. Heinz, are you in a position to answer the question?
Sure, I'll try, and maybe Mr. Foster can help me out, because he helped us with drafting. The Audit Committee made a decision as we went along that the Audit Charter really belonged at the policy level. And so that's why it's so streamlined. And as we pared it down and pared it down, we finally got it to a point where we feel like it reads like a policy and like a charter. And at that point, we knew that we needed to give it a policy number. And since there already was a Policy 1105 that dealt with the Audit Charter, we decided that the appropriate way to present it to the board and to record it as a policy was to replace 1105 with this language. Is that right, Mr. Foster?
You've accurately summarized it. That's exactly right.
So I'm not sure why that's, does that explain?
So maybe it's that we started talking about 1410 and 1420. I do understand that something is being done differently than what existed. And I can follow the logic that the Audit Charter never should have been a regulation because it is something at the board level, and we try to help distinguish regulation being superintendent authority, policy being School Board authority. So that being said, in terms of voting tonight, then many of us have said if the charter being shifted from regulation to a policy, which then makes it far more high-level, streamlined, it means that we see a value, though, of having a regulation that operationalizes the Audit Charter. And that means that we're, as we transformed the name of the Audit Charter out of regulation into policy, Mr. Wilson's concern understandably is, when it existed as a regulation, it was far more detailed. So perhaps for Mr. Wilson, for myself, for some of the other colleagues, it might be helpful, Ms. Heinz, if you feel like you and the Audit Committee kind of discussed this next steps, that the details that have been left out of the revised Audit Charter will then become your work product for revising Regulation 1420, which is no longer an Audit Charter, but it will be a regulation that relates to the Audit Charter.
So Ms. Heinz, can you answer that?
Yes, if I could. And I'd like any other Audit Committee members who want to also recall our conversations. What we found in looking at Regulation 1420 is that it was getting really crowded with information that was also in Regulation 1410. So basically, Regulation 1420, I think, was trying to carry, it was becoming kind of unnecessary, because all that it was trying to do was to explain what was in Regulation 1410, basically. So when we pulled out all that out of Regulation 1420 to make the policy, we did it because we realized that all that could be and should be in 1410, that that's the implementing regulation that we need for the policy. So that's my recollection.
So I want to make sure that I understand this before I vote. And Mr. Wilson, I would actually like for you to comment on this. And Ms. Heinz, you did a great job. Thank you for trying to provide that clarity. But what I am a little worried about is 1410, as I understand that, is under the superintendent's purview. It's not the board's? Who controls 1410?
1410 is being revised by the Audit Committee, which, as you all know, is comprised of four School Board members and then two citizen appointees. And as several members have talked about this evening, that revised 1410 is going to spell out in some detail how investigations by the Auditor General will be conducted under various scenarios, including when leadership team members are subject of investigation, the superintendent is subject of investigation, and members of my office are subject to investigation. So I don't know if that answers your question, Ms. McLaughlin, but the revisions to 1410 will provide guidance separate and apart from the superintendent or his or her office, and provide guidance directly to the Office of the Auditor General on how investigations should be conducted.
Okay. So if it turns out that as the Audit Committee begins its next phase of its work in saying, okay, we kind of deconstructed Regulation 1420, made some of it part of the Audit Charter at a policy level, there might be some things left over in the existing 1420 regulation that we might want to make sure gets captured in 1410 if it's not already there. They could either decide to shift whatever got left behind in the existing Regulation 1420 could be moved into 1410, or they could say, you know what, we certainly didn't want to leave that information off the table, even though it wasn't policy level, it is operations that the Audit Charter and/or the Office of Auditor General should have as guidance. And so they could either collapse it into 1410 or make a corresponding regulation to capture anything that got left behind in Regulation 1420. So to Mr. Wilson's concern, we could still vote tonight on the Audit Charter, knowing that it is high-level language. But anything that Mr. Wilson or any School Board member thought was in the existing 1420 regulation that is very essential, very important to the scope of the work of the Auditor General and the School Board, we certainly then, it's not to be lost forever and can be then brought forward through these two regulations, one to two regulations, depending how the Audit Committee reviews it and sees fit. Mr. Wilson, what do you think of my description of that?
Ms. McLaughlin, probably like many people watching tonight, the convoluted tying-in of the various regulations is very confusing to me. So I don't know that I'm prepared to comment either in favor or against what you've just proposed. Perhaps you could clarify.
Okay. So one of the things I heard you saying, Mr. Wilson, and why you thought we should postpone the Audit Charter vote tonight, is because it's being taken from the existing Regulation 1420. And there's a lot of red-line version language in there that you see valuable to the Office of the Auditor General and the oversight that it provides. And since the charter policy that we're voting on tonight leaves behind important language of the existing 1420, your point is, why don't we wait and not vote on the Audit Charter and make sure we've captured up all the language that presently exists in 1420? And my suggestion was that our work isn't done, since some of the language in 1420 that you noted, you don't see in the Charter. Maybe it's because we're going to carry it over into the new revised regulation.
So Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Wilson is next on the list to speak. So if he wants to address your question to him.
Yeah, and thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. McLaughlin, I think that, in our sidebar, and perhaps you captured part of what I was thinking, it wasn't so much that I saw in what will be the former Regulation 1420, language that should have been picked up. What I saw was a fairly convoluted process where we were taking an existing regulation, 1420, rewriting it, or revoking the old one, rewriting it and approving it as a new Policy 1105 for the Auditor General. But there were a number of things that were raised both at the podium and as I looked at sort of the universe of policies and regulations that aren't picked up in the proposed new, I guess, Policy 1105. And so I've been sitting here trying to crib in to the various places that I think they need to go, because these are not minor connections, these are pretty significant connections. So for example, we have a policy that is entitled Fraud, Waste and Abuse that specifically calls out the Auditor General. It says on top of page two, paragraph B, "There is a fraud, waste and abuse hotline available to all employees and individuals that is managed by the Office of Auditor General. The Office of Auditor General will involve the Division Counsel, the Office of Equity and Employee Relations, Department of Human Resources, MRS. Management, Department of Financial Services, et cetera." That's not referenced at all in the new policy, which we're calling the Charter, for the Auditor General. That's a significant component that was correctly raised by a citizen to say, what about fraud, waste and abuse? We have a policy on fraud, waste and abuse that references the Auditor General, but the new Charter for the Auditor General doesn't include a reference to the fraud, waste and abuse policy. And that's why I say it is, I can do this process, I'm happy to do it at the table if we want to mark it up and do these various things that I've listed here, and I've got my notes, but I'd rather do it in the context of a work session where everybody can weigh in and people can participate. So that's an answer to what you raised. But just to make sure that the folks that are watching, we have a Regulation 1420, we have a Policy 1420, which I don't think anyone's mentioned yet, and that policy is on accountability for public funds and property. It's a very brief policy, certainly it falls into the high-level category. But again, presumably, it ties in to the role of the Auditor General. And it's, again, not referenced in the proposed policy, which is a rewrite of a regulation, 1420, that we want to replace another policy, which is 1105, which, by the way, is the Auditor General Authority document, which was put together fairly recently, if I'm not mistaken. I think we voted on this May of 2016. And I would like to maybe have a discussion about why did we throw that one completely out, since we had that Auditor General Authority document already in place? So there's, I think, a difficult conversation, perhaps the people watching might be scratching their heads, like, what are we talking about up here? But my point is, let's take it back, let's get it right, and then let's bring it back.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I'm going to try something slightly different, because I think what this conversation reflects is a confusion as to where the various piece parts are on this policy, the regulations, and how it all fits together. In an effort to be brief, the recommendation tonight was perhaps overly brief in saying, replacing, the School Board revoked the current version of Regulation 1420 and approved the rewrite. What we don't say here, which those of us on the Audit Committee know, and some people may be more aware than others, is that on April 24, we are actually going to have a discussion about Regulation 1410. And Regulation 1410 will be a cornerstone of the implementing regulation for the Auditor General. I fully expect over time, as that function becomes more mature and we have a bit more understanding of how it will evolve, we may have more regulations. But at this point, what I would suggest is that we try to address the concerns of Mr. Wilson by adding a line to the recommendation to say and instructs the Audit Committee to address the concerns regarding the independent authority to address investigations and fraud, waste and abuse in Regulation 1410, which will be discussed on April 24 and put forth for adoption to the whole School Board.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, are you recommending a follow-on motion to?
I'm just recommending a slight modification so that we capture the concerns of Mr. Wilson, that we will include all of the stuff that we've talked about in Regulation 1410, and we can move on.
So are you suggesting an amendment to?
Yes, please.
All right. So we do still have Mr. Wilson's motion on the table. So if he'd like to, so we'll need to act on Mr. Wilson's.
We need to act on Mr. Wilson's. And then what I'm suggesting is, if we did something like that, that should address Mr. Wilson's concerns.
Okay, thank you. I have Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully, I do not add to the confusion that might be amongst us tonight. I sort of vaguely, shouldn't say vaguely, I do remember having a, you know, started a discussion of Audit Charter from long, long ago. I think I was the Audit Committee Chair at the time. It's been going on for a while. It's been going on for a while. I think we can vote on the main motion tonight. We may need a little further work to do later on, but I think we've got enough on the table for us to take on action. If you could just go back to the Audit Charter, where it is, it is page two, second paragraph. It is stated there, "This policy serves as a guide to the Office of Auditor General in the performance of its duties and does not include, nor is it intended to include, all of the office's duties or responsibilities, as they may exist from time to time." This was exactly what this is intended for. Just give a broad, broad umbrella, you know, guidance to what the auditing, function of auditing will be in Fairfax County Public Schools. So I am not going to be supporting Mr. Wilson's motion, but I will support my motion.
I have a few go-bags, Ms. McLaughlin.
So in listening to Mr. Wilson's analysis, I think one of the things that, looking at this proposed charter, that I don't now understand why, is the absence of addressing investigations that relate to fraud, waste and abuse. So can someone on the Audit Committee explain why something that was a key piece of Regulation 1420, why is that nowhere captured in the Audit General Charter?
So Ms. Heinz, would you like to answer that, or would you like Mr. Foster to answer that as a legal matter?
Mr. Foster, do you want to give it a try? I feel like we've already, but we'll give it another try. I mean, I think the idea, as I recall from the Audit Committee, was that we felt like that was operational stuff that should not be at the policy level. But, Mr. Foster, you may remember better.
Right. And just to drill down on that a little bit more, I mean, there were several Audit Committee meetings where, as members of the board have noted who were at those committee meetings, 1420 in its original form was much more detailed and much more complex. And the consensus of the Audit Committee, after a lot of discussion and input from staff, was they wanted to really pare it down and move it away from being a detailed document to more of an overarching guidance document, and therefore move it from a regulation to a policy. And so one of the things that fell out, Ms. McLaughlin, as a result of that process, was the detail that you referenced regarding investigations. And that will be addressed, that detail regarding. And that will be addressed, that detail regarding investigations will be addressed in the Regulation 1410 that's going to be brought forward.
I appreciate that explanation. I do philosophically believe that that's a very important component of the Office of the Auditor General. It's always been there. The Fraud, Waste and Abuse line is housed there. It's very important for employees and the public to know that it's there within that independent office. So to my colleagues, I, I am actually going to suggest that we really do consider supporting Mr. Wilson's motion, because I, I can appreciate that you don't need level of detail, and that can be captured in regulation, but for the Audit Charter to make no reference at all in terms of the authority of the Office of the Auditor General to oversee the waste, fraud and abuse role, I don't understand that absence.
Could I point out, the, at the very end of this, it says also see the current version of Regulation 1410?
But this, at a very-
I'm pointing that out.
No, I, I do appreciate that, and that is one of my frustrations sometimes, what we do with some of our policies, where we say, "Go see this somewhere else." If we don't believe at the very highest level, the Charter level of the Auditor General, to simply delineate that this is a key piece of that office role, we're communicating something differently. And so for that reason alone, I think it's one thing if there were some minor revisions that could come up through the Audit Committee's work on a new regulation, but I strongly urge my colleagues that, given the fact that we, there isn't a time-sensitive nature to this, and it is the Audit Charter, I think Mr. Wilson's brought forward some substantive reasons for its premature to vote on it tonight. So I'll be supporting his motion.
Ms. Hines?
I'm sorry, you, Ms. Huff.
So a couple of thoughts have come as my colleagues are talking. We already have Regulation 1410 on the work session agenda for April 24th, so I just am not seeing the harm of bringing this back at the same time. I don't anticipate that we need to do wordsmithing, and as an Audit Committee member, I do understand the conversations we've had, but I think enough concerns are coming forward that let's just cross-reference them. I just think it's bad governance to pass and then change later if we know that we're having a conversation about it right now. Because I would support adding to the policy a one-liner about the authority and responsibility to include investigations, and then under that regulation, we're stipulating the operations of that. The other piece I'd like to mention is, we have just appointed a new citizen to the Audit Committee who has not been part of this conversation and does have extensive audit experience and work, and that I think, again, just the better work we can do. I'm not, I don't want to slow this down, but it is on our work session for April 24th. And so I think actually as a slight change to the amendment from Mr. Wilson would be to postpone to the April 24th work session. I don't know if he would be amenable to that.
Mrs. Schultz?
So I think the conversation that we've had here tonight demonstrates why taking a work product, even if it's been the work product for months, this is a complexity. We don't have an Auditor General. We have been absent a member of the, a community member of the Audit Committee because we had one suddenly resign and have just gone through the process, the interview process and selection process, to appoint a new community member. And we have 1410 coming up. And this is, this is difficult, but you don't finish a project just because you're tired of dealing with it. What you do is you get it right. And again, you're, you're modeling good governance to say that you're going to align the policies. And we talk a lot about, when we pass something, it has meaning, that it sends a message. And if we pass something that we're already hearing before we pass has sent the message that we've revoked a key component, and we're saying, "No, no, 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 don't worry about it, we'll settle it in committee, we'll fix it later," that does not imbue in the public the confidence that we're going to get it, we are in fact going to get it right. The members of the public don't show up, even though you can, and you're welcome to show up to any of our committee meetings, our committee meetings are public, they're usually held across the street at Kate House Center, and the, the calendar's online, although the FOIA's aren't, that, that they don't attend, and it is not as transparent to them about what happens in committee, in committee meetings. And the other thing is, is that what comes out of a committee meeting is the recommendation to the Board, but not the full Board as a participant in that conversation. So once a recommendation comes to the Board, then if you want to undo it, you have to amend the recommendation to the Board, and then you're reverse-engineering something that you didn't even have a part of in the first place. This is not that complex, we're making it more difficult than it is. Some good things have been pointed out by members of the public, there's been confusion at the table, there isn't an alignment necessarily with the policies that are behind it, and it's not, it's not compelling to finish tonight. We can do it in concert with, oh by the way, the structure that we already have set up, which involves our new Audit Committee Member from the public. So let's just do some smart governance and say, "We're going to fix it between now and the point determined, and everything will be aligned and we'll be good."
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
I would like Ms. Corbett Sanders to restate her position on what she would like to do instead of going down Mr. Wilson's.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, you had an amendment that you, that if, if Mr. Wilson's motion fails, you had a suggestion for-
If Mr. Wilson's amendment or would fail, what I would suggest is that we, let me pull it up in front of you.
Well, I'm sorry, I have a point of order. Are you making a motion?
I'm answering a question.
No, I didn't ask her to make, I just asked her to answer the question. Mrs. Corbett, or Mrs. Darnett Kofax asked for clarification about what Mrs. Corbett Sanders had talked about before, and so I'm recognizing Mrs. Corbett Sanders to answer that question.
It would read, "Revoke the current version of Regulation 1420 Internal Audit Charter and approve, as a revision of Policy 1105, Auditor General Authority," this, "and then instruct the Audit Committee to present for adoption revisions to Regulation 1410." No, this is Regulation 1410. We haven't deleted Regulation 1410. So to address the, to ensure that the revised Regulation 1410 addresses the independence of authority, independence of the Auditor General to address investigations of fraud, waste and abuse.
Does that answer your question, Mrs. Darnett, Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Wilson, did you have a go-back?
Yeah, very briefly, Madam Chair. So just to, just to respond briefly to the proposal that's just been presented, Regulation 1410 is, is the regulation promulgated under Policy 1107. It's, so it's, it is, so, so the placement of clarifying in 1410, the authority of the Auditor General with regards to fraud, waste and abuse, I, I don't believe that actually it goes to the issue of putting it into the Charter, because, because that Regulation 1410 ties only to Policy 1107.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson, if you look at the existing draft, at the very end, on page four, that we're talking about tonight, says, "See also current version of Regulation 1410."
Right. But you're, you're talking about future amendments to Regulation 1410, correct? I mean, I'm not, I'm not disputing that the, the reference to 1410 at the end of the proposed policy is incorrect. It of course is. But also should be listed there are the other relevant policies and regulations that relate to this proposed new policy. And, and just to, you know, to, to the point that Mr. Moon raised, that there's a catch-all in there, that doesn't make up for sloppy drafting, right? We don't put catchalls in so people can, can go on Easter egg hunt to find where other policies and regulations apply. We, we put those in there. That catch-all is intended to say, to mean, I believe, that we can't delineate every single aspect of what we want in the Auditor General's policy, so we're going to put this catch-all in so that things that fall within the general nature of what the Auditor General would do but aren't described are picked up. And so I guess I dispute the idea that that clause was intended to pick up other regulations and policy within FCPS's, you know, spectrum of documents in the library. So I don't understand why there is concern, because I believe that the issues that have been raised are real, they are substantial, and we are not under any time pressure, we just have found out about them at the last moment. And so I believe that there's perhaps just some resistance because we didn't know about them. I have my notes in order so that we can go through and, and vote on each individual amendment to address them. I just don't think that's the best way, because we're going to end up discussing each end amendment and the possible changes to it here at the dais tonight.
Ms. Hines?
Okay. We really do need to move on, I think, right? So I would just say that the reference at the end of this policy, I think we do that in a lot of our policies, and we cross-reference other policies, we cross-reference other regulations, that makes sense, that we don't cross-reference Regulation, Policy 1107 is probably something that we should put in there, I agree. And I think we could certainly ask staff to go back and make sure that we are cross-referencing all related policies and regulations in here. But to my mind, I don't think that's enough of, I don't think that's enough to warrant tabling this for some time. I don't think there's new information here tonight, so, thank you.
All right. Our Board member, if Board members are ready to vote? Ms. McLaughlin?
So I had raised the question earlier, and I didn't hear an explanation from anyone on the Audit Committee, so before we vote, I would still like that explanation be provided. Why does the Audit Charter make no reference at all to the authority of the Audit, the Auditor General having over fraud, waste and abuse? Why is that not captured anywhere in the Charter?
So Ms. Hines?
When it was there in the regulation?
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Well, I, I think the, the reason probably is that that's already set down in Policy 1107, is that the Auditor General has authority over that. But I, I don't know, Ms. Corbett Sanders, did you want to add anything?
Frankly, it was recommended by our citizen member that we didn't want to bog it down with every, everything, and as long as we had a reference at the very bottom, which clearly stated that there was a linkage to the regulation, we didn't need to repeat the contents of the regulation and the policy.
Okay, so I will just give it one last-ditch effort. I implore our colleagues to understand, this is not bogging down the Charter, it is a key component of the Office of the Auditor General. No one's made a convincing statement tonight, and I think, I really hope our Board members understand, when you vote tonight to approve this Charter, or if you vote tonight for Mr. Wilson's amendment, voting for, for his motion to postpone means we recognize that having fraud, waste and abuse embedded in the Charter at a very high level is a central component of this office. If you vote for the, to go ahead and put this in place tonight, I, I do want everyone to understand what message that gives to the public. So I think there's a lot of merit for what Mr. Wilson's asking us to do to postpone. I don't think that there's merit for leaving that out of the Charter and voting in it, voting for the Charter in its current form, leaving out waste, fraud and abuse. I'm actually troubled that people think it's okay to just reference that in some other policy. It's a key component of the job.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, and I, this is actually a clarifying question for someone on the committee. So if, if we approve the proposed new policy, would there be a new Regulation 1420 that would also be drafted?
I can try to answer that. That has not been contemplated by the Audit Committee, I think, because as I mentioned before, when we were working on Regulation 1420, we realized that we were just, we were trying to combine an Audit Charter with the investigation language that was really already in 1410. And we were bogging 1420 down with a lot of stuff that belonged in 1410, and honestly, a lot of things that probably don't belong in any regulation. We had a lot of paring down to do. So I don't believe, from my, I don't believe that there's anything left to 1420 at this point that we need to do. I think all the regulation that we need now is in 1410. If someone on the Audit Committee disagrees, we can, we can bring it up. But our decision as the Audit Committee was to make 1420 the Audit Charter, that was the original idea. But it was not reading like a Charter, it was not reading like policy, it was reading like a very jumbled-up regulation. So we turned it into a policy and have, have just discarded the rest of it.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I appreciate that, and I, and I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. I understand that the difficulty of, of working in our committees and trying to prepare documents with, with three or four Board members present, and in your case, a citizen members. The reason why I ask that is because there actually is a Policy 1420 under, pursuant to which Regulation 1420 was prepared, presumably. And that, that policy presumably now doesn't have a corresponding regulation, and that policy provides and deals with accountability measures regarding, "The integrity of funding provided to the school system and insecurity of buildings, grounds and other property shall be implemented regularly and reviewed. Every effort shall be made to recover or seek reimbursement from responsible parties for losses of funds or property resulting from vandalism, theft, break-in, fraud or embezzlement." So it clearly also ties in to the Charter for our Auditor General. So I would submit that, in fact, certainly at this point, since we don't have a plan for a new Regulation 1420, and it doesn't sound like there was a review of Policy 1420 in the context of the development of this policy, that we at least add as a reference within the new policy, a reference to Policy 1420, which presumably remains in effect unless we put it on the table tonight to also revoke that policy.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr.?
I moved, called a question. I think we've discussed enough.
Is there a second for calling the question? Second by Mr. McElveen. That's a non-debatable motion. The question has been called. All those in favor of calling the question? Hines, Palchek, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Darnett Kofax, McElveen, all those opposed? Huff, Schultz, McLaughlin and Wilson, the question has been called. So the motion is, Mr. Wilson's motion to postpone action on this item to April 27th. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, point of order, a call to question requires a two-thirds vote? Was that a two-thirds vote?
It was. It was eight to four.
Okay.
All those in favor of Mr. Wilson's motion, raise your hand. Schultz, McLaughlin?
I actually was proposed a friendly amendment in light of the scheduling by Ms. Huff, and so I'm, just to make sure that we're clear, I would be willing to accept her suggestion that we discuss it at, and deal with it at the, at the proposed April work session.
Madam Clerk, parliamentary inquiry, we've had this motion on the table, we've been debating it. Mr. Wilson now would like to change it to, is he, is that acceptable for him to change the motion at this time? All right. So the motion is to postpone action to the April 24th work session, is that correct?
That's, that's fine.
And are you saying action or consideration or something else?
No, I think we could act on it at the work session if we can make the changes we need.
Well, we would still have to bring it back to the Board table.
Then that's fine, too.
So move to bring, bring the motion back to- So move to bring the motion back to work session on April 24th. So that is Mr. Wilson's new motion. All those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. Huff, Schultz, McLaughlin, Wilson, all those opposed? Heinz, Palchek, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Darnett Kofax, and McElveen. That motion fails. I have Mrs. Corbett Sanders, who has made a suggestion. Mr. Wilson, let me ask you, you've suggested that you have a series of amendments that you want to propose. Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
I will call a 15-minute recess so that Mr. Wilson and Ms. Corbett Sanders can work with the clerk to put together their amendments so we can consider them in an orderly fashion.
All right, I believe we've got everyone back at the board table. So, the situation is that we now have a series of amendments on the motion that's on the table. We also have a follow-on motion, which, Madam Clerk, I believe that's in Board Docs, and so Board members should refresh their -- they should refresh Board Docs to see the follow-on motion. Mr. Wilson has a series of, I believe, five amendments, which are in red, in front of us or behind us as well. So, Mr. Wilson is going to offer each of these motions in turn, and at that point, we would need to pass the motion, and then Mrs. Corbett-Sanders' follow-on motion would be in order at that time. So, I am going to call on Mr. Wilson for his first amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the proposed Audit Auditor General Charter be modified such that Section 3 mission is revised to read, "The mission of the Auditor General is independent -- is to independently determine, A, whether the ongoing processes for controlling fiscal and administrative operations and performance throughout FCPS are adequately designed, functioning in an efficient, effective manner, and fully accountable to the citizens of Fairfax County, and B, to investigate reports of fraud, waste, and abuse pursuant to Policy 1107."
So, Mr. Wilson, to clarify, you're adding "B" to investigate reports of fraud, waste, and abuse pursuant to Policy 1107?
Second.
That's correct, yes.
I'm sorry, is it -- I'm sorry, who is seconding? Mrs. Schultz is seconding. All right, Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Madam Chair, I believe I've already expressed the reasoning for why we should call out the authority and mission of the Auditor General to be the entity, the office, that investigates reports of fraud, waste, and abuse, and that is reflected in Policy 1107, so I don't have anything additional to add.
Mrs. Schultz?
I think that the notion that this, if we're going to pass this tonight, that it is fundamentally important, that the message that goes behind it, that we're not stripping this function out of even the charter. The charter is the direction that we're going to send this position and send to the community, and if we put this in here tonight, I think we much more clearly communicate to the community that this is something that is a fundamental inherent role of the Auditor General that we're about to hire.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary, but I also think it's accurate, and it is not confusing, I don't think. So, I can support this, and I hope that we approve it and move on quickly.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Just briefly, I appreciate Mr. Wilson bringing this to the board, as I shared with other colleagues in earlier comments tonight. I do think it's important how we communicate to the public, including anywhere from key stakeholders like the board supervisors. This addition is an important piece of this office, and if we don't put it in there, the public and key stakeholders have no idea if -- how it relates to this role and the work that gets done in this office unless they go searching for other policies and regulations, and I don't think that serves us well. So, I hope people will support this amendment.
Ms. Huff?
Yes, I will support this. I would ask Mr. Wilson if he'd be okay with taking out pursuant to Policy 1107. I do think it's appropriate that one of the things we're asking staff to do is at the bottom of this policy to appropriately cross-reference all things pertaining to this charter, and I just think it's neater. Don't want a wordsmith, otherwise I like it. Thank you.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right. Then you -- to restate your amendment, you are adding to Paragraph 3 mission, "B to investigate reports of fraud, waste, and abuse."
That's correct, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Moon?
Thank you for the amendment. I'll support the motion.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
I too will support the motion.
All right. And I do believe it was understood in the original, but it certainly, it's always good to have more clarification, that this is an important function of this audit, so I too will support the motion. And in that case, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that vote is unanimous, and that vote passes, that motion passes. I call on Mr. Wilson for motion.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I move that the proposed new policy 1105 be modified such that section, is it 3B? 5B be modified as follows in the third paragraph to read, "The Office of Auditor General shall be entitled to consult with Division Counsel as needed, and in the event that Division Counsel is the subject of an Auditor General investigation with outside legal counsel as approved by the Board."
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, again, Madam Chair, I believe this was raised by one of our speakers tonight, and I think I talked about it briefly, but it seems to me that there is a gap because the Auditor General has to have the capacity to investigate all aspects of FCPS, including the Division Counsel's office. And so, if that office is, in fact, the subject of an investigation, I think that it would be appropriate that the Board would be able, and we should call out, that the Board could approve the use of outside legal counsel by the Auditor General.
Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your second?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Schultz?
I just want to, I want to offer my support for this, and I want to do it with deference to, because our current Division Counsel is here, that has nothing to do with our current Division Counsel, and that this would be such an extreme circumstance as I would hope to never be in the position of. But I also think that having the clarity there, that we would afford an Auditor General the opportunity to legal counsel, should the need arise, is a wise thing to place in a charter, and again, imbues to the public the trust that we've heard their concerns and that we're appropriately taking the measures in a proactive way, and we believe it enough that we're willing to memorialize it in the charter for audit.
Ms. Hines?
I'm going to disagree with this one. I don't think this belongs in policy. I think that it's a matter for regulation, and I noticed that Mr. Moon seconded, so I'll wait till Mr. Moon is -- sorry, I noticed that you seconded, and so I'm not asking you a question right now. I just wanted to make sure you were listening while I was talking, because I'm not sure that this belongs in policy. I think this is something that we should hammer out as we talk about Regulation 1410. I think that we should absolutely respond to concerns of the community, I agree, but, you know, it's a bit random who shows up here on a particular night to talk about certain issues that they believe we're facing, and for us to respond to really one speaker who raised several issues by changing the charter on the same night and putting specific, what I think is really regulation-level information in the charter in response to one citizen's concerns, I just don't know that that's good policy or good practice for us. So, I would rather that we save this and discuss it when we debate Regulation 1410, which we are going to do in the next few weeks.
Ms. Palczek?
Thank you. I think if I were to support this, I want to be assured that the way it's written is clear that there must be prior approval by the Board in order to go to legal counsel. So, not retroactive, but, so I don't know if Mr. Foster, or recommendation to say, I guess, with prior approval by the Board, is that adequate change with what's on there?
Yeah, I would accept that, the change. I think that's appropriate.
I'm sorry, could you restate what you're suggesting, Ms. Palczek?
I guess it would be with prior approval by the Board, I think is the only way I'd lean towards supporting this. I'm not 100 percent.
Mr. Wilson is saying that he will accept that as --
As a friendly amendment, yes, Madam Chair.
All right, with prior approval by the Board. Are you finished, Ms. Palczek?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Strauss?
Yes, Ms. Palczek raised exactly the issue that I was going to have, because, again, the Auditor General reports to the Audit Committee and the School Board, and the School Board always has the option to seek additional counsel outside the school system, and in the case that is laid out here, the Auditor General would need to come to the School Board, and then it would be a discussion as to what to do. So, I agree, it would have to, it would have to come to the School Board, because that is the direct report, so. All right, with that, I would support it, but not without approval of the School Board.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Although I don't believe it needs to go in the charter, I think that it belongs in the regulation, and, but I can understand where the clarity may help for some, but I do believe that this level of detail should go into the regulation. The other aspect I want people to understand is that the General Counsel actually has dual reporting. Am I correct, Mr. Foster, that you report to the School Board as well as the Superintendent, and you actually serve as the General Counsel to the School Board?
That's correct. I'm General Counsel to the organization Fairfax County Public Schools and its constituents. The two primary constituents are the School Board and the Superintendent. There are situations where I report to the Board but not the Superintendent, but those situations are rare, but you're absolutely right. As a general matter, I report to both the School Board and the Superintendent.
And if there were a conflict, you would recuse yourself?
That's correct.
Right. No, I appreciate that, and I know that you do your job honorably. I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified for people that may not know that, and I do think that a prior approval is a good policy before resources are expended by the AG or any other senior leadership, if it's out of the norm. And so, you know, I'm mixed on this. I really believe that it belongs in the regulation and would prefer it in the regulation, but if it's the will of the Board, that's what we'll do.
Ms. Darrenette Kopeck?
In listening to what my colleagues had said earlier, particularly those that sit on the Audit Committee, and it was your desire to streamline the, this particular document, I believe that this should be part of the reg and not part of this.
And I will make a comment that I see why that you feel this is needed, Mr. Wilson. I'm wondering if it would have the same impact to simply take the parenthetical piece out of there and simply say, "The Office of Auditor General shall be entitled to consult with Division Counsel as needed," or with outside legal counsel with prior approval of the School Board, and then that would allow for any eventuality in which we would need to go to outside legal counsel. So, I would like you to consider that possibility, Mr. Wilson, as a --
Yeah, Madam Chair, that sounds, that sounds acceptable to me. If you could just read that one more time.
It would simply say, "The Office of Auditor General shall be entitled to consult with Division Counsel as needed," or "with outside legal counsel with prior approval of the School Board."
That sounds, that sounds very good, Madam Chair.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson. With that, I have some go-bags. Mr. Moon?
Yeah, I haven't spoken on this second amendment from Mr. Wilson. I actually prefer this greatly. The prior language that wasn't revised, I felt created, for me, a very unnecessary implication, and there's, and it almost felt like it was signaling out one particular department within our whole division. So, I think this is wholly appropriate, and therefore, it's not making any negative, you know, inferences at all, because there don't need to be. If it's just simply saying, there's going to be times we might have to use outside counsel. So, I appreciate you, Ms. Evans, for bringing your journalistic skills to clarifying something that I hope everybody sees, it's just beneficial.
Thank you. Now, I have Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a partial response to the point Ms. Hines was making, I do have a tremendous respect for Ms. Hines as a Board Member and also as a Chairman of Audit Committee, and I give a deference to the work of a subcommittee when they make recommendations to the full Board, and, you know, so long as I do not have, you know, tremendous heartburn on any part of the proposal, I generally want to support the work of the committee. There are, you know, we have a full committee members, and we had, you know, one citizen committee member as well. But in B, I actually felt that, I actually felt that what's in the proposal, the Office of Auditor General shall be entitled to consult with the Division Counsel as needed of Auditor General shall be entitled to consult with the Division Counsel as needed, that, I thought that probably, you know, belong more to the regulation than policy too, but that's in there, but I was going to support, I was going to respect the work of the committee, and as long as that is in there, I don't mind supporting additional language being proposed by Mr. Wilson. That is why I was supporting it.
Ms. Palchak? Oh, I'm bigger than, okay. With that, we are ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to add in Section B, the words "or with outside legal counsel with prior approval by the School Board," all those in favor, raise your hand. Palchak, Huff, Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, Wilson, Darnett Kovacs, all those opposed, Hines and McElveen. That motion passes. I call on Mr. Wilson for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the proposed new policy 1105 be modified such that paragraph, is it 5E, first paragraph would read as follows, "The Office of Auditor General will carry out its responsibilities in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards," and then additional language agreed, "as may be established by reputable, by reputable national associations such as the Association of Inspectors General."
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Schultz, Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, just very briefly, I did already discuss this, this issue, both at our previous work session and then again tonight. I do believe that, that without some clarifying resource that can be referred to, the notion of generally accepted auditing standards is left at too vague of a level, and this, I think this entity, this organization, Association of Inspector Generals, does promulgate what are considered best practices and auditing standards.
Mrs. Schultz?
I think with the creation of this role, and as the Board continues to sort out and refine the role of the Auditor General, even as we get ready to hire, or go through and complete the process for hiring a new Auditor General, this is, the measure that you can always look to is, you know, reasonable and prudent. Is it reasonable and prudent to have this language in there? Because this is a measure that is accepted as an industry standard, and if we norm our Charter for Audit to an industry standard that is nationally recognized, as opposed to more vague language, when we've a little bit gotten off with fits and starts to the concept of incorporating, I think we're really leading the conversation of, in education, and certainly for an organization our size, to establish the role of an independent auditor, Auditor General, and to say what that means to the public in the Charter, I think, is a wise thing to do.
Ms. Hines?
Well, again, I'm going to push back against this one. I, and I'll rely on other Audit Committee members for my memory if I'm not remembering correctly, but we did talk about this, and we don't have audit staff here tonight, as we did at our, our meetings, and as we did at our work session, the School Board work session, during which we could have brought this up, but we did not. And when we had this conversation as an Audit Committee, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards is something that people in the industry understand, and I think it may just be confusing to the public. I don't think it would necessarily be confusing to an Auditor General, because they would know better, but to say, to pull out in particular the Association of Inspectors General, when we don't have an Inspector General, we have an Auditor General, and those are very different things. So again, I, I think this is confusing, and I, we don't have anyone here tonight from the Auditor General Office to tell us what I know I heard in the Audit Committee, which is that this language is perfectly clear, as it is.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. Yes, we have an Auditor General, not an Inspector General, and the Association of Inspectors General is different, and on this, I will not accept this amended language. In some of the previous policies and regulations, there was a great deal of language about yellow book standards, and it is the, generally the reference to the yellow book standards that are, that are the accepted auditing standards. And I agree with Ms. Hines on this. I think the language that is there is certainly clear, and again, the Association of Inspectors Generals, this is not applicable to this position. Those would not be the appropriate standards that we would be asking our Auditor General to follow. Thanks.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
We've had extensive conversations about the difference between an Auditor General and an Inspector General in the Audit Committee, both last year and this year, and the citizen members, both the, the one who has been with us since its inception of the Audit Committee, including citizen members, as well as our newest member, has made it very clear that there is a difference between Inspector Generals and Auditor Generals. And as one of our citizen members is wont to say, Inspector Generals carry guns, and we do not want to have that happen with our Auditor General. And so I would, I will not support this, I think this is something that has been discussed multiple times, and, so I think enough is set.
Mr. Moon?
Madam Chair, for the reasons, same reasons stated by Ms. Hines, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Mrs. Strauss, I'm not going to support the motion.
All right, and with that, we move the amendment that we add at...
Madam Chair, if the chair would...
Yes, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, if the chair would permit, I would be remiss if I didn't allow for the possibility that we vote on this language without the clause such as the Association of Inspectors General, just putting the period after, as may be established by reputable national associations.
You know, Madam Chair, you know, point of order.
Well, I have a question for you then, Mr. Wilson. What, what national associations do you have in mind, then?
Those, those that provide the nation with the standards for auditing principles.
Mr. Moon, you have a point of order?
Yeah, point of order. You know, once, I mean, I took parliamentary rules courses long, long ago, so things might have changed, but once the motion is made, and then seconded, the motion belongs to the table. The maker of the motion cannot just unilaterally, without, without the full consent, consent of the Board, change the motion. So if, if Mr. Wilson wants to amend his own amendment, he can do that, but just, just as a friendly, friendly amendment, that's not what I learned, Madam Chair, that's what I wanted to point out. I wanted to do that even, you know, half an hour ago, but I reframed myself, but I think, I mean, if this is going to continue this way, I'm going to have to point it out as a point of order.
All right, I think Mr. Moon makes a good case for his point of order. Mr. Wilson, would you like to amend your amendment? Madam Clerk, do we need to vote on this first?
No, it stays amendments, we can amend them ourselves. Yeah, we can amend them, so we can amend them as well.
Mr. Foster, what is your, what are you, what advice do you...
We're sidebarring here, I mean, it seems to me that the two immediate options are, you either vote on the amendment that's before the Board, or you consider on consent allowing Mr. Wilson to amend his amendment. Those seem to me to be the two options.
All right, well, this motion is on the table, let's vote on this motion, if you want to offer a separate motion, you can offer that separately. Ms. McLaughlin?
It's my understanding with Robert's Rules, that the person who puts forward the amendment can, and we already did it earlier tonight, they can choose to amend their own language before we vote on it. There's no reason to have to vote on this, and even if we say we want him to amend it first, and we can vote on his amending it, but it's the amendment to the amendment, it's not vote that down, now bring forward another one. He wants to amend his amendment on the table, so he can amend to amend, but we certainly don't need to vote this one down and then start all over again.
Okay, so, Mr. Wilson, if you'd like to amend your, to make a motion to amend your amendment, to remove those words, then why don't you make that motion?
But I thought you had to amend with consent, you had to vote on whether or not he could.
Mr. Foster? Madam Clerk?
We need clarity on Robert's Rules.
I know we do, yes, we do. All right.
Yeah, I think that if there's going to be an amendment to the amendment, it needs to be through a formal motion to amend, and then seconded like any other motion.
All right, Mr. Wilson?
Madam Chair, I need to, you're saying, I need to propose an amendment to my...
An amendment to remove this language.
Madam Chair, I propose an amendment to my proposed amendment, such that the clause such as the Association of Inspectors General would be deleted.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Schultz. All right, let's take a vote on that. All those in favor of allowing Mr. Wilson to amend his amendment?
Blowing to amend.
Palchak, Huff, Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, and Wilson, all those opposed, Hines, Darnett Kovacs, and McElveen. That amendment to the amendment passes, so we now have removed that language, and we're back to the motion to simply add at the end of E, as may be established by reputable national associations. Is there further discussion on this amendment? Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I feel like we've got the Department of Redundancy Department here. Because we say, "in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards," as may be established by reputable national associations, we also have a government organization called the GAO that may establish standards. I just think we keep it short, to the point, "in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards."
And I will speak to this amendment, I won't be supporting this amendment, I don't think we received, we've just removed the specific association that was originally proposed in there, and we've realized that this is not an Inspector General, it's an Auditor General. I'm not hearing of any specific association that is being referenced by this, so I don't think it adds anything to where we are, so I will be opposing the amendment.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I'm actually very glad that Mr. Wilson has put forward this language. Having the existing language that says generally accepted auditing standards, who's generally accepted auditing standards? By putting just the additional phrase, and it's a phrase, it's not even a whole new sentence, that it's established by reputable national associations, I think it just shows that the Board understands the importance of being able to frame out for this office what the expectations are, and communicating to the public that it is our expectations, that their responsibilities are in accordance with reputable national associations is just a good, strong statement, and I'm, I really hope people aren't going to get so hung up on, oh, we shouldn't be changing this anymore. It's good language, and I hope people will get behind it.
Mr. Wilson?
Madam Chair, I have nothing further to comment on.
With that, we'll take a vote on this amendment, all those in favor, raise your hand. Huff, Schultz, McLaughlin, Wilson, all those opposed, Hines, Palchak, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Darnett Kovacs, McElveen, that motion fails. I call on Mr. Wilson for an amendment.
Madam Chair, I believe that may be the final proposed amendment to the policy, I believe the references at the end are not an amendment to the policy itself.
A second.
Okay, this is a motion by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Moon. So I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you just said, Mr. ...
Madam Chair, I think what I said was that adding the references to the end of the policy is not in fact a modification to the policy, it is just references to the applicable related policies and regulations. So I, we can vote on it, but I...
But I believe that's, that's nonetheless an amendment to what we have in front of us.
All right, then, then I'll propose that the, the policy 105 as proposed to, for tonight's consideration, be amended such that references to policy 1107 Fraud, Waste, Abuse, and Policy 1420 Accountability for Public Funds and Property be added to the end of the proposed policy.
Okay, and seconded by Mr. Moon, Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Madam Chair, I believe this is an obvious reasoning for why we want to include references to the related policies.
Thank you, Mr. Moon?
Nothing further.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I'm just looking at it, and maybe it's just the way it's written there, it looks confusing to me. I think what we're trying to do is put those two underneath, see also the current versions of, right? Because it looks to me like we've got, see also the current version of Regulation 14-10, and then we just have those other two things hanging out there.
You're suggesting that the formatting needs to be consistent?
Could the formatting be fixed, and then say current versions?
So, Madam Clerk, is it possible for you to format that? Okay, is this, is this formatting clarifying that for you?
Yeah, and if we said versions, that would help me too. Thank you.
All right, Ms. McLaughlin?
I support this change, I think it speaks well to the Board's work, that if we've got these policies, or regulations, or charters, that the public knows all the associated policies and regulations that relate to it, so I hope people will support Mr. Wilson on this one.
All right, and with that, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand, and that passes unanimously. So we now are back to the main motion, as amended. The main motion is to move that the School Board revoke the current version of Regulation 1420 Internal Audit Charter and approve the rewrite as a revision of Policy 1105 Auditor General Authority. Is there further discussion on the main motion? Ms. McLaughlin? No? Mr. Wilson, okay. Seeing no further discussion, I will call for the vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, and that is unanimous. That motion passes.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, point of order, I think? I'm looking at what's on Board Docs right now.
Yes.
Which is the motion and voting on the bottom, and I believe that the main motion has been changed here, where it says revoke the current version of Regulation 1420 Internal Audit Charter and approve the rewrite, blah, 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 and instruct the Audit Committee to present for adoption, yada, yada. That is not, if you look at what's on, unless I'm missing something, if you look at what's on Board Docs...
What's on our script?
Well, right now, we have, we have not considered the follow-on motion.
I have to refresh? Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that what we have voted on is just the main motion.
Yes, we have, we just, we just approved the main motion, and so Ms. Corbett Sanders had a follow-on motion, Ms. Corbett Sanders, are you planning to offer your follow-on motion?
We'll get it pulled back because we no longer need it.
That's right, okay, so Ms. Corbett Sanders is not going to offer her follow-on motion because it's been superseded by the amendments that we just made to the main motion and approved. So, Ms. Hines, does that take care of...
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so with that, we have concluded our work on the Audit Charter. We now move to item 4.03, Social Studies Basil Instructional Materials Approval, and I call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I hope that this particular motion doesn't take two hours. I move that the School Board approve the titles listed for kindergarten through grade 12 social studies, which does not include grade four Virginia studies, as recommended by the Social Studies Major Instructional Materials Adoption Committee and the Selection Advisory Committee.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Palchak, Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your motion? Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your motion?
As a brief background, in 2015, the Virginia Department of Education revised standards of learning for history and social studies, and since then, our social studies team from instructional services has been revising the curriculum documents to align with these new standards. The contracts for instructional resources currently in use in Fairfax County Public Schools expire during summer 2017. And as a result, students and teachers will no longer have access to these resources without some action. Therefore, in January of the last year, instructional services began the process for new basal instructional materials as defined in FCPS Regulation 3004. Our current resources were adopted seven years ago in 2010. In June of last year, the school board approved the committee members, appointed committee members to the social studies basal instructional material adoption committee to start reviewing and recommending basal instructional materials. The committee convened in August and September of the last year to review resources for K-12 that were submitted by vendors in response to RFP for consideration as basal instructional materials for social studies. However, for grade four Virginia studies, no titles were reviewed by the committee because there wasn't any submission to RFP. Instructional services plans to issue a new RFP later this year for grade four. The titles are listed in the attachment to this agenda, which is on the board doc, what the adoption committee and selection advisory committee are recommending to the board's action this evening, and I ask for my colleagues to forward this motion.
Ms. Palczek, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, just very briefly, I think Mr. Moon gave a very good recap, and I want to thank Dr. Presidio, Ms. Komenko, Ms. Riley for all their work on this. Also, I really appreciate it, and for the public, if you would like to see the community input, summary has been posted, as well as the timeline, which shows the work of the committee, and want to thank all of our community members who served on that, in addition to the rationales of the committee and the recommended titles put forward. So I think they've done some excellent work in doing this strategically, mindfully, and in communicating the results to the public. So I want to thank them for their work, and I'm happy to second this motion.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So I do appreciate Mr. Moon, first of all, providing for the public who's watching the essence of what we're about to vote on, and I do want to thank staff for providing all of the attachments. That was very helpful to me as a board member. But I do just have a few questions that hopefully won't be too difficult. The first one was about the actual vetting process. As noted in the attachment, the review committee itself met in August and September. But I was wondering, just in a very brief summary, what did that actually entail in terms of, I noticed you had a diverse committee that included teachers and other key stakeholders, but when you're looking at K-12 social science, that's a lot. So was it that they were given a presentation on each of the options, and then they studied it? I mean, I just, again, very briefly, how would this committee ultimately say, okay, this is the company that we're going to adopt for this particular grade level and this particular subject?
Yeah, thank you very much for that question. So we did have a pretty large committee, about 60 members, that included teachers, community members, and then also content experts. And typically what happens, which is what happened in this particular adoption process, is that we have an opportunity to hear from each of the vendors. We have a lot of support from our procurement office, so we write a very detailed request for proposal that, you know, really limits and details all of the requirements that we have, and then vendors have an opportunity to submit their materials, and we have an opportunity to review all of those and see presentations, but we have an opportunity to look at the materials in detail as well. So here we have an opportunity to review the various grade levels of the text, and then all the ancillary supporting materials, media, and additional supporting materials that come from each vendor.
The second question I have has to do with the delivery model. As Dr. Presidio, you may well remember, when you joined the division, you arrived at a time where those of us who were new to the board had just approved a math adoption, and we sadly discovered after that math adoption that the board was not made aware that your predecessor's department had decided to go with a pure online delivery subscription. So we didn't have hard copy textbooks for the math textbooks. We went online with a set in the classroom. And what that ended up being is that the community had to come forward to us and say, regrettably, the online platform wasn't working. Families were having to go out of pocket and spend several hundred dollars per child to find the textbook if and when they could, and many principals were running through their paper budgets, you know, Xeroxing to try and figure out how to get the written material to students because the online versions weren't working, and even my own son experienced this degree of frustration. So could you just describe what's this going to actually mean in terms of what we're purchasing? What's the delivery model, or is that something that has yet to be determined?
So this is really a hybrid delivery model. We definitely like the online materials because those are able to be updated on a regular basis, and they provide opportunities for students to have more engaging and more relevant learning experiences through the online components of the adoption. But we recognize that many students need a hard copy textbook as well, and many students prefer to learn in that way. So the way that we've set up this adoption is to get the online licensing for the titles and then purchase 35% hard copy books that would be available for students to use, to take home, check out, and then use in the classroom. And at the high school level, for the AP classes, where students really do a significant amount of content area reading, we're choosing to purchase hard copy books in all of those courses.
I really appreciate that last statement you just shared, because, again, my colleagues, I hope you're really paying attention. Social studies is about reading. It's history, and it is a lot of reading. And we heard from our students that when you're looking at that volume of reading material, they really don't like staring at a computer screen for that length of time. They prefer to read it in a textbook. So I do have concerns when we're talking about extensive reading. So at the elementary school level, where homework loads should be 10 minutes per grade level, I'm not as concerned with the model you've described. I appreciate that you're going to go with hard copy for all at the high school level. I think that's absolutely essential. Middle school, I do have a little bit of concern with the 35%, because I think the volume of homework, especially in our honors level social studies classes, they could find themselves doing a lot of reading. Could you speak to that a little bit on how that might present as a challenge?
Yeah, one point of clarification, tonight, the board is just voting to approve the titles, and then the ultimate adoption would be part of the budget that the board will vote on in May. So we could always choose to purchase more or purchase less. So the board has time to make that determination and consult about that as well. But tonight, we're just approving the titles.
Okay.
And the recommendation is really based on conversation with principals and teachers about how they see the need for instruction in their classrooms. And that's where we got at the high school level with those AP courses, really needing to ensure that every student would have a hard copy book.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Lockhart, I would just make a request this evening that as we move toward the budget, and as Dr. Presidio mentioned, that the delivery model and the cost components will be something we'll be looking at as part of the budget. I would appreciate maybe that we have a couple of options that staff might present, saying if we were to bring this model of hard copy for the middle school level, what would be the additional cost doing it that way? Or is there a way we could have a reserve that in the event we determine 35% hard copy is not sufficient at the middle school level, that we could address that as needed? And then, I guess, finally, to my colleagues on this one, I do think that we'll want to have just this, you know, overall conversation at the budget in terms of cost. It might be helpful to know what has been our prior social study adoption costs to what this one now is. And otherwise, I feel comfortable at this time, but my one last question, Dr. Presidio, is we discovered during the math textbook adoption with the online that certain vendors had really great online platforms that worked beautifully, and others, they didn't. So is that something as part of your vetting process, you know which publisher has a good, solid, reliable online platform? Because for my colleagues who aren't aware, if they have a bad platform, the kids can't get on, and then they can't get their homework, and then they get all stressed out and frustrated and trying to go in and tell their teacher, I couldn't get my work done because the platform wasn't working, is just a very real challenge that we need to be aware of. So is that something you guys are able to have determined in advance? I mean, beyond just you like the content, but they're reliable, was that a piece of your vetting?
So that definitely was part of the vetting process, and, you know, we learned, I think, a number of important lessons during the math textbook adoption. And one of the lessons we learned is, you know, the load testing in Fairfax is really, really important for us. So that's something that we've had conversation with vendors about as well. And with our timeline, bringing the approval to the board tonight on the titles as part of our contracting process, we would have the ability to start to actually put the materials in the hands of teachers before students would come back, so that we could start to work out those kinds of issues. And if there are any issues that we discover, have time to actually resolve those with the vendors before students actually would be back in school.
Okay. And one last clarifying question on the AP World History textbook. Is this the same textbook we've been using, or is it different? And the only reason why I ask is because if this school division were to survey the students who've been using the AP World textbook, it has been exceptionally dense. Both my husband and I happen to be history majors at the undergraduate level, and we were blown away by the textbook. It is not one to develop a passion and love for history. And so if we've got a newer textbook that I hope is really going to be a more 21st century learning, which isn't cram facts in, but, you know, knit together critical events in history and why they matter, I'm just, I know you guys vetted it, so hopefully people looked at it, but obviously, the last textbook was adopted by somebody who thought it was good, and the student reaction I heard was not the same.
Right, so I do think AP history is a very challenging AP course, just in general, in terms of the breadth of the material. It's really the most comprehensive course that we have, so that's a challenge no matter which vendor you go with. This is not the same text, but I'll have to check on the vendor, to be honest with you, just to see if it's actually the same publishing vendor or not. We had our social studies coordinator, Ms. Riley, here, but she had to go home a little bit early this evening, so I can get back to you on that pretty quickly, though.
That's okay. I just thought I would go ahead and share the input with you all as you're going through it. And to my colleagues, I appreciate you indulging me with these questions, but I really feel like we need to pay attention to this sort of stuff. In the end, it's our vote on this selection, and again, I want to thank the work of the committee. I want to thank Dr. Presidio and your team for working on this, and I really, I do hope that our students will find we've done our very best work for the materials they'll now be studying.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, I just wanted to thank all of the staff and the citizens that worked diligently to go through the curriculum and the text, and I very much appreciate my own citizen appointee to the task force because they brought to it the expertise of being a curator at Gunston Hall. And so it's a good example of utilizing the citizen experts that we have, experts throughout Fairfax County, and you name the issue, and we can find an expert for it. So we appreciate their volunteer time. The other thing is that I wanted to clarify that Superintendent Lockhart, you had indicated in a superintendent's update that part of these materials would be covered out of funds at the local level for instructional materials, and others would be paid for out of the budget. And I just wanted to make sure that people watching understood that we were looking for greater efficiencies and being fiscally prudent.
Mrs. Schultz?
I just, what Ms. McLaughlin brought up, and I hate to keep asking Dr. Presidio about some of these issues, but I do, in the approval of this and the question about the availability of hardcover textbooks came up, and Ms. Michael might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's budget question three or nine response. The concern that I have is, and if I could just get an assurance tonight, that the individual schools are provided the funds, and maybe they're not provided the funds anymore, and it's become centralized. I know we're in a transition with some of it on acquisition of textbooks for students who want them. And the reason I ask this, and I want to clarify this, in the approval of basal materials like this, is there were so many trades that were exhibited by administrators of buildings, trading resources, and resources really means dollars, trading resources that are line-itemed as textbooks, that I'm concerned that even if we say we're providing the money, whether it's money locally to the building or ultimately through central acquisition, that it remains that you cannot trade away dollars and textbooks for other choices in a building to the point that a student who wants one of these textbooks should be afforded, they should not be forced into online textbooks for a myriad of reasons. And Ms. McLaughlin and I spent a lot of time with students in student town halls and buildings, and the reaffirmation, not only from the students themselves, but from parents at home, that if they want a book, they can have a book, and the funding is there.
You're absolutely correct that the last time we made an option available, that we would purchase a book for any student who wanted one, we did pay for those centrally, so we didn't allocate that funding out to schools. That way, we could ensure that every student who wanted a book did get one.
And so that's going to remain, because if I total up, and I did, I don't have the figure right here, but if I total up the total dollars traded out of schools that were ostensibly for textbooks, and the stories that I get, and I know, we swear, oh, no, no, they can have a textbook. I have, as long as both arms, stories of students who say, no, 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 my teacher said I can't have a book, my principal said I can't have a book, you know, and they want one. But we're reiterating, we're going to clarify, you get a new, you get new basal materials, and if you want a book, if you want a book, moms, dads, students, if you want a book, you can have a book. Okay, great.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to give a green card to Ms. McLaughlin for bringing up love and passion for history in our meeting tonight. I think that's wonderful, so I'm going to give her a green card. For those in the audience who may have not watched our retreat, that was one of the things that we did at our retreat recently, where we commended each other for the positive things we appreciated about what they did. There was another card for things we didn't appreciate so much. So I have a couple of questions of Dr. Presidio. The first one is very basic. In the list of courses included, are the subjects the same as in the previous iteration for social studies? Are there new titles?
No, we don't have any new titles in this adoption cycle.
Okay. And in terms of, if I, am I understanding it correctly to say that when you have a title, you order a certain number of subscriptions? Is that correct for each title?
That's correct, yes.
So where you have the electives, there's, I think, seven electives. How much drop-off is there in terms of the number of subscriptions that are ordered versus the ones that aren't? the ones that aren't? So that you've got one that's called Sociology in U is the last one. How many subscriptions would you buy for that, do you think?
So those are really dependent on the number of students that are enrolled in those courses by school level.
So the subscription is purchased when the class size is determined?
No, it's based on enrollment trends and patterns, but, you know, our process right now, I mean, schools are going through their staffing and scheduling process right now. So at the school level, a Lake Braddock secondary school might vary from a Fairfax high school in terms of how many titles they would need, and that's based on how many sections they're going to teach and average class sizes in those sections.
So are there, I mean, I guess, what is, are there potential savings for the school system if, say, we reduce the number of elective titles by one? Let's say we did, what, is there any magnitude of savings if we just sort of say, well, let's approve them all except Sociology in U?
If I'm following your question correctly, there would be a cost savings, obviously, because we would not incur a cost because we would not purchase that material. But that course then would not have the materials necessary to support teaching and learning in that particular course.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just trying to quantify, like, for the board, what is the level of savings we might see if we were to reduce the number of those elective courses that we buy subscriptions for?
We'd have to do some analysis. I mean, we have, you know, we have projected numbers that we need to purchase for each of those courses, but off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to answer that question tonight. I'd have to get back to you on that one.
Is it possible after night, if we approve these titles, if we were to find that information and find it compelling, vis a vis all of the other things that we're considering, to say, hey, let's take a look at reducing the number of titles? Would we be able to reduce it after tonight if we were to so decide?
Yeah, because tonight, we're just approving the titles themselves, not the actual number of purchase in the budget. So what we can do is, I mean, we could provide you, if you're interested, cost breakdowns per title.
Okay. And then just, this is just, if this is the same title, this, the one they called Law in Action, it says Street Law, A Course in Practical Law, that's the same law title that was included previously?
We're checking right now, give us just a second. And back to Ms. McLaughlin's question earlier on the AP US History, that is a different publisher than the company that we're currently under contract with.
AP World.
I'm sorry, AP World History. Yeah, sorry.
And I guess, on that particular title, Law in Action, I guess, what I just wanted to find out, was there thinking and a consideration of putting in a constitutional law AP course in lieu of the Street Law course?
So the Street Law course is a course that's approved through our regular course approval process, and, you know, that's a course that is staffed right now, and students are enrolled in that course. So if we were to replace that course with another course, then that's something certainly that we could do. But at this time, that's a course that we offer in our curriculum.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. And with that, I will call for the vote that the school board approved the titles listed for kindergarten through grade 12 social studies, which does not include grade four Virginia Studies as recommended by the Social Studies Basal Instructional Materials Adoption Committee and the Selection Advisory Committee. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous with Mrs. Huff away from the table. We now go to the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the February 9th and February 23rd regular school board meetings. 5.02, authorize staff to issue a notice of award to multiple contractors for electrical installation services for portable classroom trailers, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute, deliver, and administer contracts on behalf of the school board. 5.03, award a contract for the Annandale High School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Function Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $530,500, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.04, award a contract for the Chantilly High School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Interstate Corporation, in the amount of $465,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.05, award the contract for the Automatic Temperature Control System replacement at Marshall Road Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Bowlin Trains Services, Inc., in the amount of $399,900, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.06, approve the titles listed for Latin textbooks for levels 1 through 3 as recommended by the World Language Basal Instruction Materials Adoption Committee and the Selection Advisory Committee, and approve the title listed for upper-level materials, levels 4, 5, AP, IB, as recommended resources for these levels. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. We now turn to new business, and I call on Dr. Lockhart to introduce the FY '17 third-quarter budget review.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to, due to time, turn things right over to Ms. Michael.
Good evening. Ms. Michael, I think your microphone may not be working, or? Are we having a technical difficulty there?
Is it working now? Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Good evening. The third-quarter budget review offers us another opportunity to revise the budget based on current year trends and new requirements. The agenda item this evening, as always, is organized with descriptions of the recommended changes, followed by updated fund statements for each of the school board funds. Once the third-quarter budget review is approved by the school board, it's forwarded to the county for inclusion in their third-quarter budget review packet, which provides any necessary supplementary appropriations for FCPS. In order to coordinate the timeframe with the county's third-quarter budget review, the analysis in this review tonight is based on approximately seven months of actual activities. So if we move to the top of page one, in terms of revenue, the first item is our annual adjustment for the National Board Certified Teacher stipends. Each year, the state provides pass-through funding to FCPS, which FCPS is then required to pay to teachers who are eligible for the state stipend. So based on the actual number of teachers receiving the stipend this year as compared to the state's projection, we'll see a decrease in both our revenue and the related expenditures of $190,000. So in total, our revenue adjustments are $190,000. On the top of page two, in addition to the National Board Certified Teacher adjustment, the other recommended expenditure adjustments are as follows. Item B is public safety radios. During FY '15, FCPS was advised by the county that the public service radio system that was used by FCPS and the county's non-public safety agencies would need to be replaced as it was an older analog technology that would no longer be supported by the vendor. With FCPS using about 50% of the public service radio devices, the county estimated that FCPS's share of that replacement upgrade would be $7.4 million. And to address that, as part of the FY '15 mid-year budget review, one-time funding in that amount was set aside to cover that cost. The county has implemented a broadband push-to-talk system to replace their public service radios. However, FCPS was unable to pilot that system because we were waiting for a legislative change to give us that ability. Now that we've received that ability, we'll go ahead and pilot that system. But at the same time we were waiting, FCPS's Transportation Office has been conducting research into other alternative technologies that could also be used in place of a push-to-talk device. And the savings from those other saving, other devices will be at least $2 million. So we're recognizing $2 million savings this evening, and after the testing of all of the radio options is completed, any additional savings would be recognized at a future quarterly budget review. Item C is based on the actual fuel prices that we've paid this far this year, and projecting the rate through the rest of the fiscal year, we're anticipating savings of $1.3 million on fuel. So as of February, the blended rate that we've been paying is $1.83. That is an increase from the beginning of the year when we were paying $1.56. But based on our estimated savings for the rest of the year, we believe we'll save $1.3 million. Item D is savings of $1.4 million in our bus driver salary accounts. Due to vacancies that we've experienced this year, our expenditures are trending lower than we projected. The last item E is $1.8 million in health expenditure savings. Based on the enrollment changes that occurred during our open enrollment, the employer cost for health insurance for calendar year '18 will be $1.8 million lower than projected. This is a recurring savings because half of the savings from calendar year '18, half of that plan year, occurs during fiscal year '18. So when we look at all of these expenditure adjustments together, they total $6.7 million. So on the top of page three, in summary, after accounting for both the revenue and the expenditure adjustments, there's funding of $6.5 million available. We recommend that this funding be added to the beginning balance for FY '18. With that additional funding, our beginning balance will be $33.5 million, which is just slightly more than the $33.1 million included in our FY '17 budget. So this really maintains a consistent use of one-time funding from '17 to '18. As we consider possible uses for this funding available at third quarter, based on the fiscal challenge that we're facing for FY '18, we believe using this funding for beginning balance is the best use of this funding. This will also allow the school board to prioritize any one-time funding needs, including equipment, major maintenance, and strategic plan investments, to look at as part of our FY '17 final budget review. Looking to the long term, we will continue to work to reduce the amount of one-time funding that we use to balance the budget, but we're very hopeful that in future years, we could decrease our beginning balance through an increased use of revenue. The other funds begin on page four. We have no adjustments to the school construction or the Food and Nutrition Services Fund. In our ACE and Grants and Self-Supporting Programs Fund, we're recommending changes in both grant and state revenue and the corresponding expenditure adjustments that accompany that. And then finally, in the School Health and Flexible Benefit Fund, we're reflecting the changes in projected revenue and expenditures as a result of open enrollment. So thank you for the opportunity to present this to you this evening. We have a work session scheduled on Monday, which is March 13th, to discuss this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Michael. I have a couple of board members, Ms. Schultz?
I don't.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you very much. And I would like to thank Mr. Plattenberg for the work that your department has done on the public safety radio system, because I know in FY 2015, when the county indicated that we were going to have to purchase the public safety radios, there was a lot of concern at the time, the high price tag, and I believe you had indicated that you thought that you all could come up with a better purchase, which you've done. So to save us $2 million, we're very grateful for that. So thank you for continuing to pursue that. Certainly, all of this helps us get a little closer with our budget issues for this next year. So a good example of efficiency and effectiveness with patience. So thank you very much.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So I guess my first question is, when we sent our proposed budget over to the board supervisors that we voted on February 9th, originally, if I recall, we anticipated a budget gap of about $66 million, correct?
So there was a gap of $61 million between our requested increase in county funding and the funding included in the county executive's advertised budget. So that was a gap of $61 million.
Okay, I'm going to just go back to the conversation we had on February 9th, where as we were trying to figure out the proposed budget by the superintendent, and then what we would advertise for our budget, I recall the number $66 million. Then I recall that the board then said, we're not sure what we want to do on ERFC changes, which was another $4.7 million, I recall. So the question is, was it $66 million plus $4.7 million by the end of that night? Or was the $66 million because we added in the $4.7 million that night?
I don't have my notes in front of me in terms of that date. I don't remember the $66 million. I know when ERFC was not included in the advertised budget, I mean, you're correct that that did increase our requested ask of the county, but that should have increased that gap to $61 million.
Okay. So that, basically, we were at $61 million. So here tonight, what you're showing us is that through third-quarter savings for FY ' '18, if we were to follow this guidance and take the $6.5 million, put it to the, you know, beginning balance, then that $61 million, not bringing in what the county executive said, just what we did, our $61 million now gets dropped down to about $55?
So, and then in addition to that, we start with a $61 million, we need to recognize the impact of the final state budget. So that was $4.2 million. So that reduced that gap. And then with this funding, it's not only the $6.5 million in beginning balance, but it's also the $1.8 in recurring savings from health. So that brings our gap down right about to $48 million. And we'll go over that in Monday's work session on FY '18 budget.
Okay. So I do appreciate that. I just wanted to know, before we went into the work session, some of the numbers we're talking about here. I think it's great that we'll be having a work session conversation. I will just share with all of my colleagues that, given what we know FY '18 looks like already, to me, this is just really great news, because whatever the number is, and hovering somewhere around 60, and then how we chip away from there, this is, you know, a means for us to find ways that we don't have to create some really painful cuts in programs and services that are very important to our community. So I appreciate you presenting this tonight, and I also appreciate the guidance that let's not go find other things, let's just try and close that gap for FY '18.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. I just did want to make sure we understand that what we're talking about is taking this one-time savings, right? And you spoke to that a little bit just now, but I think it's maybe important to reiterate for people that one-time savings, which most of this is, is if we put this into the beginning balance for FY '18, it will then be spent on recurring costs, because that's how we do the budget. And so then we'll have to find it again. So we're sort of rebuilding that deficit that we were trying to chip away at. And so while it is good news right now, we have to recognize that we're spending savings that we don't really have. Is that accurate?
That is correct. We will be returning our beginning balance to the same level that we used in FY '17. So you're right, we won't be chipping away at reducing that beginning balance, but looking at the gap that we're facing, this seemed like the best recommended use of this funding.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Schultz?
Could we not, to address your concern, Ms. Hines, and I think we've been less than artful, maybe, with the explanation that it goes to recurring costs if we transferred over to the beginning balance. Could we not effectively obligate or encumber ourselves to attribute that $6.5 million only to one-time costs that occur in fiscal 2018?
We could if we had $6.5 million in one-time costs built into our FY '18 budget, right?
Well, we certainly do, because we do contract in costs, for example, that we could choose to contract just for that year.
What we would need to do is reduce our budget by that reoccurring amount, and then appropriate one-time funding to meet those needs, knowing that that funding then wouldn't be available the next year.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'll be suggesting.
Ms. Palchak?
Before I ask my question, would you mind repeating that, Ms. Michael? What's the way that that would have to happen?
So in our FY '18 budget, the items we currently have in our budget are recurring, right? In order to use this funding that we're setting aside for a non-recurring item for a one-time item, right, we would have to reduce our FY '18 budget by $6.5 million in recurring items, and instead fund $6.5 million in one-time items.
Okay. I'd be interested to see what that would mean. Beyond that, my question was... Beyond that, my question was, thank you. My understanding is in our past joint meetings and last night on the county side, I believe they have chosen not to use their third quarter budget for FY '18.
The county was able to eliminate their use of one-time funding a couple of years ago. They were able to close that gap with recurring revenue, right? And we too are hopeful that we'll have eventually recurring revenue that we could use to close this gap.
Okay, I guess my question is, but they have a gap this year for FY '18?
Their FY '18 budget is balanced as the county executive presented it.
Okay, but they've chosen not to use any additional third quarter revenue, or I guess that's coming out soon?
So their third quarter budget review won't be shared with the board until Tuesday, so I don't know what's in their third quarter budget at this time.
On Tuesday, and so if we want to know whether or not they're making similar decisions for next year, that should be presented on Tuesday?
Correct, it'll be shared on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I see no other board members wanting to speak, so I want to, Ms. McLaughlin.
Quick clarifying question, again, we can talk about this at the work session, but when we talk about recurring funds, one-time funds, in a $2.8 billion operation, we have anything from one-year contracts, one-year consulting fees, that could easily be 6.5 in one-time funding. So I don't think we can necessarily just dismiss and say, oh, the 6.5 is, it's fine, but it's just one-time funding. I mean, the bottom line is, it's savings, we have it, we'll put it toward the beginning balance for years and years. This is what, how we have to piece it together, because we're not a taxing authority, and we don't have any other choice but to do it this way. But we're still building or creating an FY '18 budget that will be balanced by the time we vote on it in May 28th. And every year, we could end up saying, this will end up being one-time funding, because we're just not going to pay for it next year. We'll have to make choices along the way. So I don't want to get lost in the fact that this is still 6.5 million dollars, that's going to make things a lot better than cutting something else.
All right, well, we will see you on Monday and have further conversation about this. Thank you so much, Ms. Michael.
Thank you.
So we continue with new business. I'll read the one we just had a presentation on. 6.01, approved revenue and expenditure adjustments is reflected in the FY 2017 third quarter budget review scheduled and as detailed in the agenda items. 6.02, award the contract for the boiler replacement at Virginia Run Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.03, award the contract for the boiler replacement at Poplar Tree Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.04, award the contract for the boiler replacement at Pimmin Hills Center to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.05, award the contract for the boiler replacement at Dunn-Loring Center to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.06, approve the HRAC bylaws as detailed in the agenda item and attachment. We now go to superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Lockard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things to share this evening. The Center for Juvenile Justice and Reform at Georgetown University McCourt School of Public Policy awarded a Fairfax County team the 2016 Capstone of the Year Award for their efforts and success in redesigning and enhancing a youth diversion and restorative justice program. 449 youth participants were placed in the diversion process with a 95% completion rate last year. Recidivism has also been reduced. The partnership includes the school system, police department, the county courts, Northern Virginia Mediation Services, and the County Department of Neighborhood and Community Services. This week is National School Breakfast Week, so I thought I'd just give you a brief update on our most recent statistic. We now serve 22,000 breakfasts to students each day. I had a great time last week reading to some of our students for Read Across America Day on Thursday. I visited Old Creek as well as Pine Spring. Have to admit, I got a little tongue-tied on a few of the Dr. Seuss books, but I managed. Want to thank Principals Armando Perry and Dustin Wright for welcoming me. Seventy-seven FCPS students have been named to the 2017 All-Virginia Band, and 52 FCPS students have been named to the 2017 All-Virginia Orchestra. Both groups perform on Saturday, April 8th, at Colgan High School in Manassas. FCPS students from 23 high and secondary schools were named to the band or orchestra sponsored by the, I'm sorry, the All-State Band Orchestra sponsored by the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association. Six students were named alternatives to the All-Virginia Band, and two students were named alternatives to the All-Virginia Orchestra. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard. Agenda item eight, Board Committee Reports. I call on Mrs. Strauss for an update on the forum held earlier this evening.
Thank you. At the forum, we discussed whether or how we could post the contents of FOIA's on the FCPS website. The board asked for some additional information. When that information comes back, we ask that the information and the proposal be further discussed by the board's public engagement committee. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Board matters, and I call on Ms. Palchak.
Sorry, I was not ready. I would just be very brief. I want to thank all the Providence community members who came out last night for our joint budget meeting with Supervisor Smith and our financial teams. Also want to thank Principal Novak for a tour and a visit. He's really doing a great job at enjoying being at Folsbridge High School. And finally, want to let people know that this Saturday morning, from 9:30 to 11:30, I will be hosting a Funding 101 Workshop, an advocacy conversation, and will be joined by the Vice President of Advocacy from the FCCPTA. That will be at the Providence Community Center over close to Vienna Metro this Saturday, 9:30 to 11:30.
Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, just very briefly, I want to say thank you to, I'm making my rounds, starting with my high school principals. So I'm going to pre-thank Principal Eline at Robinson, and Principal Goldfarb, Principal Poole at Woodson, and Principal Thomas at Lake Braddock. I've been making this tour very specifically to talk about complex budget issues, as we just heard, somewhere between 55 and 60 million dollar gap, and how to best go about that so that we don't wind up closing the gap really on classroom size and teacher compensation as we look for innovative ways around that. And I appreciate the time and the time of the other principals as we have the opportunity to get to them. And wonderful news, Dr. Lockard on the juvenile justice award. I will say that, you know, anything that we can do to continue the path of restorative justice implementation is definitely, I think, in the long run a winner in Fairfax County. And finally, I just want to say that in Fairfax County, I was amazed on Wednesday that our call-out rate for our teachers was no different for our educators, our staff in the building, than any other Wednesday, and I think that just models how committed to really world-class education Fairfax staff and educators are, and I am profoundly appreciative of that.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to thank Mr. Kerr and the rest of his class at West Potomac, who hosted me for the Combating Intolerance classes last week, where they talked to alumni of the West Potomac Building that attended the building as Groveton students during the '70s and '80s, and it was a great dialogue about how we embraced differentiation and diversity at this school during that time period, and how it's led to the inclusive schools environment today at West Potomac. Tomorrow, I'll be at West Potomac again, speaking with the theater classes, and I encourage people in the West Potomac community to support their first annual Bike-A-Thon to raise funds for the outdoor learning center, the Wolverine Green. Want to thank the PTA at Wayanode for hosting me on Tuesday night. It was a great discussion about the renovations that are planned for that building. Want to encourage people on Saturday to attend the Real Food for Kids Expo at Lake Braddock. And on, just want to announce two additional pieces. We had a meeting this past Tuesday night about the forthcoming principal selection for Walt Whitman. If you have ideas or comments about the perfect characteristic of a great principal, someone who would be very similar to our previous beloved principal Roger Vanderhyde, please send them to Mr. Dade. And on March 20th, we will be having a community meeting at 6:30 at West Potomac High School to get input on the forthcoming principal selection there as well.
Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. I want to thank Aldrin Elementary School for inviting me to participate in Read Across America, always lots of fun. I had the honor of presenting awards to a group of sophomore students at Thomas Jefferson for a STEM contest that they won that was sponsored through Verizon, and thank you, Verizon, for sponsoring the, it was a state competition, and for the awards that they gave to our students. And I want to congratulate Melanie Pinkus, who is the McLean Editor-in-Chief of the McLean Newspaper, The Highlander. She has been named the Virginia Journalist of the Year, quite an honor. I believe there was a very nice interview from one of the TV stations and numerous other presentations and explanations at McLean High School, so congratulations, Melanie. And Saturday, I will be at the Real Food for Kids event at Lake Braddock. Thank you.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be joining Mr. Ryan McElvin to go down to Richmond on Saturday. At the VCU, there will be Tuesday finals, Oakton girls and Woodson boys.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, I want to certainly echo what Mr. Moon just said. It's pretty impressive that we have two Fairfax County high schools going down to compete for the state finals, both men's and women's for basketball. And as the mother of a former state semifinal player in men's basketball, I'm very excited to see Woodson returning again, and certainly wish the Cavs every bit of success and hope to be down there myself, but not quite sure on some other family commitments first. A couple of things, I do want to say thank you to Cardinal Forest Elementary and Little Run Elementary, my children's alma mater, for inviting me for the Read Across America. It was absolutely delightful to spend time reading Dr. Seuss with the fourth graders as well as the kindergartners. Their joy of being read to is really wonderful, and especially with my grown children, I don't get the pleasure as much anymore. So it's really, was a great experience. I'm so proud of our teachers and our principals for creating such a special day for the students. I also want to thank Principal Chad McCray of North Springfield Elementary for the tour of the newly renovated elementary school. I'm sorry, Mr. Plattenberg's not here. I just want to give a shout out to Design and Construction. Principal McKay said they've just been wonderful, and he was so happy with the entire process of that renovation project. And I encourage our leadership team to go through North Springfield, because Principal McCray has done some really creative and innovative things with that renovation, and it might be something we want to consider for future elementary renovations. I also want to thank the Braddock residents. Almost 30 residents came out to my community hours last Friday and spent over two hours with me while we talked about issues like the budget, parental concerns about elementary school recess, and how can we get more unstructured time for students for learning in play. We talked about homework loads, and also the importance of creating an environment that's welcoming for all students, and concerns about recent developments at the federal level and how that may translate to our transgender students feeling protected within Fairfax County schools. I also wanted to let the community know that I will be hosting a Budget Town Hall on Wednesday, March 22nd, at the Kings Park Library. And I do look forward to attending the Real Food for Kids this coming Saturday as well at Lake Braddock, and really appreciate all of our parent advocates and everyone involved in Real Food for Kids. It's been a wonderful transformation in our county to see something as important as, you know, our student meals and what that does for health and well-being.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So last weekend, I traveled to the Virginia Beach area, and my wife and I were staying at the Doubletree Hotel, and we walked in through a crowded lobby and got our keys. And when we got off the floor, we had to step over the bodies of high school students that were strewn through the hallways, and my wife immediately said, we're not staying here tonight. So we checked out. But the reason why we saw those high school students was, it was the Virginia DECA State Leadership Conference was happening down there. So I want to give a big shout out to all of the students from Fairfax County who went, almost 400, I believe. 225 of those earned the right to attend the DECA International Career Development Conference in April, and another 25, a couple dozen were first-place winners. And so shout out to all of those solely students who worked so hard, and all the other students across the division who went down and represented Fairfax so well down at that conference. I also wanted to thank the community that came out to the Budget Town Hall this week. I too had a town hall with Supervisor Smith, although not the same Supervisor Smith. Thank you, Supervisor Smith, for hosting that and organizing that. Thanks to Ed Long for coming and explaining the county side of the budget to all those in attendance, and thanks also to our own Alice Wiggington for coming out and eloquently defending and discussing the school's budget. So thank you very much to all of you who came, and hopefully it was an informative and helpful evening.
Ms. Darnett Kowex.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had to have been, as many of my colleagues have been, talking to community members as well as principals and teachers about the budget and their expectations, and just hearing and listening to them. I also had the pleasure yesterday of going to Edison, who is, has a new global STEM program as a result of a collaborative grant. And this is a program where kids self-selected into it as a STEAM initiative, and I went with my colleague, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and we got a tour of the, it's about 70 kids. They are pioneers in this. They will be taking a curriculum like this through three years of their high school. They can integrate it with the IB curriculum. Right now, they're, and everything is integrated, the math, the science, we have a couple, you know, I know TJ does that very well, but this is the first program within a school that we are doing it that way at such a great extent. And it was great to visit there and see that. And if any of my colleagues would like to go there, I'd love to come with you to show you what we're doing there, because I think it's going to be a model for other schools who want to do that. And I too will be having a Budget Town Hall on March 22nd with Jeff McKay, and I look forward to any of these citizens who want to come out and hear more about the budget.
And I just want to thank several schools in my district for their hospitality. I went to Stewart High School to discuss the budget with a number of teachers and parents, and that was a good discussion there. I want to thank Glenn Forrest Elementary School and Wayanoke Elementary School. I had a great time reading to the children there at Read Across America Day. Mason Crest, I want to thank the principals there as well. Mason Crest, I want to thank the principals there as well as the teachers for having a good conversation about how they do AAP Level Four there, and, you know, doing magnificent work in that area. Woodburn Elementary School, they had a wonderful concert by Fairfax Symphony pianist for their children there, and that was certainly enjoyable, as well as a visit to Annandale Terrace Elementary School, where we had a conversation about the use of Title I funds. So thank you for those schools for inviting me and hosting me. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.